Okay, thank you. Good morning. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety as amended. Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. This meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. My name is Zahil Bright and I will be chairing today's session. Panel members are Larry Clay, Dino Lombardi, and Peter Reed. Secretary Treasurer is Sabrina Salatino. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is a traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabek, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen of the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with a computer or telephone and have the option of participating via video or audio only. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for decision by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. Pardon me. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons, and public bodies are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. Today, I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation, if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair, should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five minutes. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we first call on speakers in the hearing room and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, are there any minutes of the last meeting that required adoption?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and panel members. Yes, the minutes from September seventeenth and October first are ready for adoption.
September seventeenth and October first, thank you. Thank you. Do we have a motion? Thank you. Mr. Reed moves to adopt. Do we have a second? Mr. Clay seconds. Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. Minutes have been adopted. Are there any declarations of interest of panel for items in this time slot? Seeing none, moving on. Are there any deferral requests?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes. We do see one request for deferral. Item number seventeen seventy-seven Roxborough Street West, file number A zero six three eight slash twenty-five T E Y. We do have the applicant online, so we can probably deal with this matter at this time.
All right, thank you. Item number seventeen.
And through you, Mr. Chair, we do have two speakers in opposition, but we'll just hear the deferral request first.
Okay.
Good morning. May I begin?
Hold on one second.
Can you just hold off a moment, please?
All right, thank you.
So item number seventeen is seventy-seven Roxborough Street West. And the purpose of the application? To construct a new three-story detached dwelling with a rear basement walkout with stairs, a front porch with stairs, a front second-story balcony, a rear ground-floor sunroom, a third, sorry, a rear third-floor cantilevered balcony, and a rear yard, in-ground swimming pool. Also to construct a new one-story detached ancillary building, a two-car garage in the rear yard, a butting the laneway. The garage will be connected to the main dwelling underground basement level. The committee had before it the following communication: Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. Also, deferral request from the agent, an arborist's report, justification letter from the agent. We've also had staff reports from community planning, Ravina National Features, Urban Forestry. Actually, two from Urban Forestry. We also have total of four form letters in support from variety of addresses in Roxborough Street. And we also have correspondence in opposition from one address on Roxborough. And that's, I believe that's it. Okay, and the agent for this is Mr. Makur. You're there, I believe?
Yes, it's Luca Chandler.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I get your name and address, please?
Sure, thanks. Sorry for jumping in earlier there.
No, no, no problem.
My name's Luca Chandler. I'm a planner here at Studio Deep. Our address is one nine seven Spadina Avenue here in Toronto. And I'm here today representing the owners of seventy-seven Roxborough Street West to request a deferral on our application.
Thank you. I wonder if you might just outline briefly why you require the deferral?
Sure. So the crux of it is that we've been in ongoing communication with some of the adjacent neighbors and are working together and have worked together to make some design revisions to reduce visual and shadowing impact on their properties, specifically the resident in number seventy-five Roxborough Street West. So there have been a number of design revisions that require us to sort of go back and reassess the variances that we're going to need to request, causing us to require the deferral. So it's design revisions and also a second arm of it is to reduce some impacts on some of the adjacent trees, reducing the proposed encroachment into their tree protection zones. So it's sort of two fronts.
Thank you. I think the latter part of your comment there refers to the forestry comments with requesting that we deny, I think it's five variances?
Absolutely. It is in reference to the forestry comments as well, but it was also a concern of the community members that the impact on the tree. So the initial incentive was to work together with the community. But I did see the forestry comments come in after that, those sort of conversations had begun. And so absolutely, we're keeping that in mind as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. Do we have some folks in opposition?
Matthew Helland. You have been muted.
Good morning. Good morning, Matthew Helland.
Hi, Matthew. You have been unmuted, so please go ahead.
Mr. Helland, are you there?
Through the chairs, perhaps we can try the next speaker while I reconnect with Matthew.
Thank you.
Thank you. One moment, please.
Yeah, Greg Wolfon from seventy-five Roxborough West is saying we're supporting the deferral for all the reasons that Luca mentioned.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wolfon. You beat me to it. So you're in favor of the request for deferral?
Yes, please.
Thank you very kindly. Take care. Let's try Mr. Matthew Helland again.
Hello, Matthew. You've been muted and you're a panelist, so you have full access and control to the volume. Please go ahead.
There. My apologies. Were you able to hear me just now?
We're able to hear you perfectly now. Thank you, Mr. Wolfon.
Okay, excellent. My sincere apologies. That was on my cellphone and for whatever reason it could get muted. I'm here on behalf of seventy-nine Roxborough and we also support the deferral and look forward to continuing discussions with the applicants.
Thank you. Could we just get your full name and address for the record, please?
Yes, the name is, yes, the name is Matthew Helland, one eighty-one Bay Street.
Thank you very kindly. You heard the request for a deferral. Are you in favor of or not in favor of a deferral?
We support the request for deferral on behalf of seventy-nine Roxborough.
Thank you very kindly. Thank you. Take care. All right. If we can get back to the agent.
We can go straight to motions, Chair?
Yeah, we could. So do we have a motion?
I'll defer all this application for the reasons that the agent has requested.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Reed. All those in favor of the deferral? You have your deferral, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. That's all for deferral requests, so we can start with item number one at this time.
And I take it there are no files to be closed either?
Through you, Mr. Chair, cema.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to item number one. Item number one is twenty-seven Brooklyn Avenue. The purpose of the application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a complete third-story addition with a rear balcony, a front bay window with a second-story balcony, and also to reconstruct the front covered porch with stairs. The committee had before it the following communications: Plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. Four photographs of trees on the subject property, a staff report from Urban Forestry, and a nine signature petition in support from Brooklyn Avenue and Beaumont Avenue.
Through the chair, I'm still connecting with the agent at the moment through a call, and there are speakers in support as well. Give me one second. Thank you.
Sure.
Hi, Amy. You have been unmuted? Oh, my apologies. My apologies, Chair. Alan McCarr. You have been unmuted?
Hello?
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and committee members.
Name and address, please.
Sorry?
Name and address, please.
My name is Alan Makur at one fifty-nine Quebec Avenue. I'm here on behalf of the homeowner of twenty-seven Brooklyn Avenue, Toronto, Mr. Benlin Springer and Denise Campbell.
Thank you. Mr. Makur, I don't have anybody in opposition, but let me just see if any of my colleagues have any questions for you or require a presentation. Bear with me a second.
I have a question, Chair.
Question. Mr. Clay has a question for you.
Is this a waiver by any chance? No?
Through you, Mr. Chair. It was done on a zoning certificate.
I was just wondering, you're not seeking a variance for rear yard landscaping, but the photos that you've submitted seem to suggest that your rear yard is virtually all paving stones. So you don't need a rear yard landscaping variance?
Right. So we did the zoning review, and that was not flagged out. I asked, are you sure this, all the variants? He said yes. And we're not doing any work in the backyard, and it has been like that since the home was purchased.
Right, it's an existing condition, but...
Existing condition, yes.
Okay. It seems a little unusual. It looks like from your photographs that there isn't a whole lot of soft landscaping back there.
Yes, we know this. There was supposed to be some work done at the back, but we just thought maybe it's beneficial not to do any work at the back.
Okay.
Because of the landscape issue.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clay. Mr. Lombardi has a question for you as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm looking at the photos that were just referenced, and I'd like a little more explanation. There are no labels on those photos, and I'm wondering if the agent can explain to us a bit about each of those photos, just for the benefit of the committee.
Sure. So the first photo, the enlarged one, is looking at the backyard from the back of the house. There are two existing trees and existing pavers. I see a bench there and fence on both sides and a detached garage on the left side. And there's a fence at the rear of the property, but it's not the end of the property. The property extends more, and there's a parking spot at the back. Actually, maybe two parking spots. The bottom left is the view of the home from the front. It's an existing tree, lighting poles, and some landscape. If you're looking at the existing home, there's a front porch, it's wooden, and also a balcony. A balcony is to remain. Reconstructing the front porch, we'll be excavating from the basement from inside just to create more living space. The photo in the middle at the bottom is looking at the home from the rear fence. The similar stuff I explained about was on the photo in the first photo. And the third photo is just a photo of the existing deck on the second floor at the front.
Thank you. I have a follow-up question.
Please go ahead.
If I may. The mandate of this committee, according to the Planning Act, is when we deal with minor variances, we must be satisfied that the variance is being requested meet the statutory test, the forceful test in the Planning Act. Can you explain how a fifty-six percent increase in the FSI that you're requesting satisfies the first test, which is to maintain the general ten purpose of the official plan?
Right. So the purpose is to create more living space because the home itself is a little bit small for the family and is growing, and we're not increasing past the existing footprint. Actually, we reduce the general area that could be increased by creating a deck at the back, so to reduce that area. Yes. I hope that answers your questions.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lombardi. Any other questions, concerns? None? Okay. So perhaps we'll take it into committee now, Mr. Makur, and look for a decision?
Are there speakers in support?
Oh, I beg your pardon?
Through you, Mr. Chair, no.
No, there aren't any. Sorry. Okay.
Chair, I'm happy to take this one. This is a very straightforward application, and it is only looking for two variances. I am a little bit surprised that there wasn't a requirement for rear landscaping, but if a zoning examiner was comfortable, I guess we'll take that. And it has significant support from the neighbors. I don't think the proposal as before is going to have a negative impact on neither the street nor the neighborhood, so I think it's a supportable application. Unless anyone has any comments, I'm happy to move a motion to approve, subject to forestry condition number one.
Thank you, Mr. Clay. Do we have a second, Mr. Reed? Thank you. We have a motion on the floor, seconded by Mr. Reed. All is in favor. Thank you. Mr. Makur, you have your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you. You too. Okay. And we move on to item number two, which is forty-three Turnberry Avenue. The purpose of the application is to legalize and to maintain the reconstruction of a complete second-story addition and the construction of a rear two-story addition, including a basement extension below, and front and rear covered porches with stairs, which were all constructed beyond an authorized building permit. The committee had before it the following communication: Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. Four photographs of the subject property received February twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Covering letter from the agent, a decision number, and an order to comply. We also have a staff report from Urban Forestry. We should have Amy Schaefer, the agent, online?
Through the chair, I'm attempting to make a call with her at the moment, and let's see if she's here. Give me one moment. Thank you.
Okay.
Hello, Amy? Amy, you have been unmuted? I guess through the chair, perhaps we can...
Move on.
Yeah, just to the audience here is...
Hello?
Oh. Is this Amy Schaefer?
Yeah, it's actually Amy Tollutter. I am on the WebEx.
Okay, great. I wonder if you might, are you speaking to this particular application, I take it?
Yes, I am.
Wonderful. Could you just give us your name and address, please?
Amy Tollutter of Janson Consulting at seventy Main Street North in Campbellville, Ontario, L zero P one B zero.
Thank you very much. We don't have anybody in opposition, but I'm sure that our panelists may require an explanation perhaps of your request? And you might have questions for that?
Sure. Good afternoon.
Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair, committee members, and members of the public. I am here asking for a release of four variances of the zoning bylaw. We are proposing a second-floor addition, a rear addition, and front and rear covered porch additions. We are working with the existing footprint of the house. We have existing main floor walls we are working with, so we are kind of set on the lot, which is why we are asking for these variances. I won't touch too much on the order to comply as it was uploaded with day letter of kind of all of the events which happened, but we are here to legalize and rectify that order to comply. Should you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. Let me just see if any of my colleagues have any questions for you at this point.
Chair, I think the main thing I think we're interested is, you know, what's different between what was previously approved and what they're asking for today? Maybe you could give us a short overview of what's different?
Sure. So what kind of started first with this application? I can't touch too much on it because we weren't the agent involved, but the building permit that was issued for this property first was for a new dwelling. That was never the intention for this project. So through the build and from the inspectors coming up to site, it was noted that this was not a new build, and order to comply was issued. So we have been brought on to take a look at this, to see what we need to do to fix this. So a minor variance for these four variances were noted. The old variances that were approved, because they were for a new build and completely new design, or different design to ours, they don't apply to our project, our new proposal. So we are here now for the new order, minor variances, and we will be applying for a new building permit for an addition rental after this.
Okay, so for all intents and purposes, the previous approval that you received is irrelevant because it has nothing to do with what you're doing now. Your client had started doing some work on this new application. You were stopped for an order to comply, and now you're seeking variances to deal with the in-progress construction of the, I guess, the renovation or reconstruction. Is that basically it?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And so your client proceeded with the construction without a permit, a building permit, or just without these variances?
No, they did start construction with the permit. However, the scope of the project was found to be different from the approved building permit. So the original building permit was for a new build, so new foundation walls, new main floor walls, whereas what happened on-site was the existing foundation and the existing main floor walls remained. We changed the overall height of the building, but a lot of, what was proposed from the first is relatively the same in terms of some of the floor area and how the building footprint looks, but it's a different scope.
Okay. It's a little unusual?
Yeah.
It is a little unusual. I know from speaking with the homeowner, the intent was to always complete this legally within what you are supposed to do. However, there was some miscommunication from what we know. So the original building permit for a new dwelling kind of followed the same footprint as the existing house, but the intent was to demolish that house and rebuild. I guess on-site they found there was no need for that rebuild. The foundation is still in great shape, so a rental addition has taken place.
Thank you. Mr. Lombardi has a question for you. I'm sorry.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is considered an as-built situation. Am I correct on that?
Yes, some of it would be considered as-built, yes. The rental addition is not complete, which is why we have received an order to comply.
Okay, so I'm still not clear on why an order to comply was issued by the City of Toronto. Typically, what triggers an order to comply is, you know, if you vary from a height variance or a setback variance, et cetera. So are you saying that the scope of the building permit triggered the order to comply?
From our understanding, with multiple meetings with city staff, yes. With building permit examiners, because we did try to submit three revision permits first to this, but it was found that it wasn't considered a new dwelling anymore. It's considered an addition rental. So we have been asked to go through this process again, and we spoke to... and we spoke to city planners to see if we could reuse some of the variances from before, but the building, the drawings, were just too different from the originally approved variances.
All right, thank you. And just a follow-up question. In terms of the increase in mass, can you explain or justify that increase from point-six times area of the lot to point-nine-eight times area of the lot?
Sure. So before, we were only working with the one-and-a-half-story building. We have a two-story building now, from outside wall to outside wall. So that floor area is for, for the most part, that second-floor area. It's to help the owner have additional living space, bedrooms, and bigger living spaces for her and her family. From the previous application, we did receive a approved variance for floor area, which was higher than what we are requesting now.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardi. Any other questions or concerns? No? And we don't have anybody in opposition, so we don't have to go. We'll take it into committee and look for a decision. Okay. Who'd like to take this one on? Mr. Reed?
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I mean, as my colleagues have stated, this is a pretty unusual situation. And the committee doesn't condone construction without a proper building permit. But the variances that are before us, I do think are minor and are really similar in terms of the footprint and setbacks as the previous approval. The massing is slightly different, but I would say it's actually less impactful. So I do believe that, I mean... Is someone else... Yeah. I think the impacts of these variances are minor. I do think, yeah, the FSI is larger, but I think that's kind of in line with the development pattern in this neighborhood. So I'll move approval of this application, subject to urban forestry condition one. And with the note that we often add at the end for the record that the committee does not condone construction without a building permit.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Ms. Lombardi?
If I can just add a friendly amendment, I would also like to add a condition for construction to be substantial in accordance with...
Through you, Mr. Chair, site plan and elevation plans?
Yes, site plan and elevation, not interior.
Thank you. Would you get to a second, perhaps? Thank you, Mr. Lombardi. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the floor, forestry condition one, and a condition that the construction be substantially in accordance with the site plan and elevation. And we also have a note for the record that this committee doesn't approve of applications that require legalization or construction that's been constructed without permission. Mr. Lombardi's got a second. All those in favor? Thank you. Your approvals, your application's been approved. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Thank you. Okay. And moving on to item number three. Okay. Item number three is Two Old George Place. And the purpose of the application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a third-story addition with a ground-floor rear patio to the south and southeast of the rear yard, front and rear second- and third-story balconies, and a front third-story terrace. Committee had before the following communication: copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, city council decision affecting the property, arborist report, presentation materials from the agent. We also have staff reports from Heritage Planning, Urban Forestry Development and Engineering Services. We also have opposition letters or correspondence in opposition from Douglas Drive, Edgewood Crescent, and it's a number of pieces of correspondence. Douglas Drive, Edgewood Crescent, Chestnut Park Drive, Highland Avenue, Old George Place, Edgar Avenue, Binscarth Road, St. Andrews Gardens, Roxbury Drive, Queen Street West, Glen Road, Standish Avenue. And then we also have correspondence from the North Rosedale Residents Association, also from Whitehall Road and Winchester Street. We also have eight form letters in opposition from Lampert Avenue, Glen Rose Avenue and St. Andrews Garden. And we have with us Mr. McGaffey. Good morning, sir.
So through the chair...
Name and address for the...
Yeah, through the chair, we have the agent in person, as well as speakers in support and opposition in person as well.
Thank you. Mr. McGaffey? Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. My name is Sean McGaffey, Senior Associate at WND Associates, forty-seven Roselawn Avenue in Toronto, M four R one E five.
Thank you. We do have people in opposition, so a presentation will...
Yes. Thank you. I would just like to make some remarks here. We did file presentation materials. I do apologize, it's split into the two pieces just for size requirements, but as I said, my name is Sean McGaffey. We are the agents for the owners of Two Old George Place. We've been working with Heritage Planning and RNFP staff and TRCA staff over the past two years to develop and refine the proposal before you today, which includes site visits and submissions to Heritage, RNFP, and Urban Forestry. And this is shown in the letter as well from Castles. It was as part of the file, which has a project timeline of the various steps. If I could get to slide two, please. So this collaborative effort resulted in a proposal for additions and alterations to the existing dwelling, which were ultimately supported by Heritage Planning Services and approved by city council at their July twenty-third, 2025 meeting. Copies of those decisions and the relevant staff reports are provided as part of your file materials. You can see in the photo here, the subject site is located at the southern terminus of Old George Place in the North Rosedale Heritage Conservation District. It is an unrated building in the applicable plan. It forms part of the ravine lands character area. If I could get slide eight, please, which is characterized by inconsistent building heights, soffit relationships that vary, and dwellings that are of a large-scale and outsized character. You can see this in the existing condition of Old George Place, where substantial dwellings interact with the slope and terrace into the ravines. And that's at slides two to six, and as well we'll have some materials farther on. If I could get to the renderings at pages fifteen to seventeen, please. In general, the proposal includes the restoration and the addition of the designated heritage building with a highly articulated and stepped-built form to provide for substantial side yard setbacks to preserve privacy on adjacent properties where windows are proposed. And you can see we've included a set of annotated plans as part of this presentation, which details those setback relationships as well as the location of windows. With respect to variances numbers five and six, the outdoor terraces are screened by building mass from adjacent properties, as well as the use of landscape planters integrated into the building itself, which pull the edge of the terrace back and screen views. This was a key consideration of working with heritage staff. And maybe we can just pause on these for a second, but there's a series of renderings here that give you an idea of the summer and the winter conditions. Maybe perhaps figure seventeen. All work will take place within the existing footprint of the building. From a land use planning perspective, our analysis demonstrates the proposal meets the four tests of the Planning Act. And as been noted, all decisions of city council must be consistent with the PPS 2024, and city council has considered this application and made a determination at their July twenty-third meeting. I've had a chance to review the materials submitted in opposition, and I'd like to clarify several points raised. There's no question that Rosedale is a unique area and an HCD. The HCD has specific guidelines for alterations and additions to properties. These have been carefully reviewed by city staff and informed the development of the proposal before you today. The resulting floor space is reflective of the existing and planned context of the site and results from the exclusion of lands below the top of slope from the lot area. If we were to include the entirety of the lot, the density that's proposed is point-six-five, which is within the typical range that you would see in the exception thirteen fifty-one for properties in North Rosedale to go up to point-six-nine. The setbacks are proposed of the existing configuration on the site and in many cases exceed the minimum requirements of the zoning bylaw, often two to three times, such as the eastern wall, where windows are proposed. It's a terraced, stepped-built form. There's no variance proposed for overall building height nor the number of stories that's raised within the letters. This application does not ignore the realities of the ravine. It works with the TRCA to shape the proposal. The proposal includes significant ravine restoration efforts that will be undertaken by my client in consultation with the TRCA, which is the result of variances seven, eight, and nine not being opposed by TRCA staff in their staff report. Overall, it is not overdevelopment. It's the result of thoughtful, careful design with input from all regulatory bodies, including city council, and will positively contribute to the architectural character of the district. For these reasons, it's my independent opinion the requested variances conform to the four tests of the Planning Act. They maintain the general intent and purpose of the official plan and zoning bylaw. They're individually and collectively minor in nature, and they're appropriate and desirable for the development of the land. I'm pleased to address any questions that the committee may have.
Thank you. Let me just see if my colleagues have... Mr. Clay's got a call.
I know we've got a number of speakers, but something the agent mentioned, I just want to be abundantly clear here. You said that all work is going to be done within the existing footprint. Is that correct?
That is correct, and that's...
So can you just give... I mean, I presume then that the variances are related to upper-story activity. Can you just very quickly summarize for us, you know, what is being done that's triggering some of these variances if you're staying within the existing footprint?
Absolutely, be happy to. So variances seven, eight, and nine relate to the TRCA ravine slope setback. So those are recognizing that the long-term stable top of slope actually crosses through a portion of the existing dwelling right now.
But that's an existing condition?
That's zero-meter setback.
Okay.
The front yard setback encroachments for the second-floor balcony terrace is basically maintaining that first... There's a one-and-a-half-story building, basically, or two-story building right now, with the second floor setback from the first floor. As part of this, as part of this proposal, the second floor will be aligned with the first floor. And if you look at some of the existing pictures, there's this very postmodern glass pyramid that was attached in the early 2000s that would be removed, restored with a brick facade. And then the third floor, which is new, is set significantly back from that front main wall with that landscape terrace area. There are a number of annotated slides as part of that presentation at each floor provided with some of the specific setback references. I know cognizant of time, but the third floor, the side yard setbacks will range from anywhere from five-and-a-half to seven-and-a-half meters. It's a one-point-eight to two-meter minimum third-floor step-back to this, what we call the APS feature, which is the rounded, almost dome-like, and sorry to Michael to use that language, but dome-like feature at the third floor. And that step-back increases again to four-point-six-five meters, where the majority of the third floor is. So this is all sort of working within the existing footprint to step the building up from the finite sides as you go up.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions at this point? No, we'll move on then. Thank you, Mr. McGaffey. We have... Person in opposition, is it Sarah Richardson?
Yep.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Very well, thank you. And you?
I'm great, thank you.
Oh, you have to name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Sarah Richardson. Number one, Old George Place. I know I look like one person today, but I am here because I am the next-door neighbor to this property. If you could go to the next slide, please. Old George Place is a very rare cul-de-sac in an architecturally significant area. I may look like one person, but I am here today representing my neighborhood, all the directly impacted neighbors, and over fifty households in my neighborhood, all of which have submitted letters here to you today. I believe you missed two streets on your list, and also the North Rosedale Residents Association. This little diagram shows red triangles for the directly impacted neighbors, and the yellow dots represent homes owned by the applicant. Next slide, please. This is a streetscape view of what Old George Place currently looks like. We are proud to have two A-designated heritage homes, one by Ron Tom on the left. The next one is by John B. Parkin, who is the architect of this building we are gathering here today, the applicant's home and my home on the far right. As you can see, we're characterized by low, modern houses that recede into nature until this proposal came along. And I have shown you a proposed altered streetscape view. I understand we're here to talk about whether we meet the minor variance criteria, and this application fails all four tests. We've also engaged the land use planning lawyer, who has backed up this opinion. The excessive height, bulk, and scale are inconsistent with Rosedale's established form and violate both the spirit and the letter of the zoning intent. Next slide, please. Our street was developed in nineteen fifty-seven and had a covenant that was in place for forty years that mandated no house could be more than twenty-five feet above the crown of the street. The proposed dwelling height of this home is roughly equivalent to a five-story building with eight-foot ceilings. It is not just three stories high. It is over three-and-a-half stories high and sits on top of a garage that is entered from the street. In terms of the general intent of the official plan, I'd like to show you on the right of the next slide, please, you'll see a picture of my home from the other street. This is the most imposing view of my home, and I decided to measure it the other day. It's twenty-three feet tall. If you look at the illustration on the left provided by the architect, you'll see my home is completely dwarfed by this residence. Next slide, please. When we talk about the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw, the bylaw permits a maximum floor space index of point-three-five, which would equate to a ground floor of approximately twenty-six-hundred square feet. And the applicant is proposing at one-point-zero-two or over seven-thousand-six-hundred square feet. It exceeds the allowable limits by nearly three-hundred percent, which is fundamental overdevelopment through excessive density, creating an oversized structure on a small heritage lot. Speaking of heritage, I just wanted to make note of the fact that Heritage specifically said in its report that the variances should be considered without reference to their prior decision. And I do hope you will take that into your consideration. Next slide, please. In terms of the desirability for the appropriate development or use of the land, the encroachment to setbacks and hazard zones undermine the environmental protections. We are on an exquisite ravine in this neighborhood. The increased platform count and size creates a loss of privacy and overlook onto neighboring properties. The red arrows show some new balconies. Also, I'd like you to take note of the floor-to-ceiling window, which will be looking directly into what is today my very private bedroom and bathroom. It is not minor in nature. This is not a minor variance. It represents an overdevelopment that would fundamentally alter the character of Old George Place. The oversized platforms and terraces, if you can move to the next slide, please, are, vary from fifty-seven percent, three-hundred-and-seventy percent larger, a hundred-and-forty percent larger, and in the case of the front, is a one-hundred percent increase in the allowable protection. Next slide, please. In conclusion, I'd like to just point out that the proposed redevelopment exceeds zoning permissions by margins of forty to two-hundred-and-ninety-five percent. It has excessive size, height, lack of setbacks. This would set a damaging precedent for our neighborhood, and we urge the committee to deny this application. And I do hope you will consider all fifty-one letters that have been submitted to you by houses all around my neighborhood. We love Rosedale. It is unique. It is a heritage neighborhood, and it needs to be protected. The applicant does not need to build in Rosedale. Thank you.
Perfect timing. Thank you so very much. Let me just see if my colleagues have any questions for you at this point.
Quick question. Thank you for your presentation. Has the applicant reached out and had...
We had a meeting, we expressed our deep, deep concerns a year ago, and I have presented at the Heritage hearing, the East York hearing, and now today. I'm also the daughter of a lifetime city planner who I vividly recall working on the official plan. I take this matter extraordinarily seriously, and my father is an architectural historian. So, this...
So I'm assuming that the discussions that you've had were...
Unproductive.
Unsuccessful, unproductive.
I've been told time and time again they have no choice. Because of the restrictions of the ravine, they have no choice but to go up and take what, this house was originally built for a couple with no children, and the lot size, this is an irregular lot that was made smaller when the street was developed in nineteen fifty-seven. I have the original covenant, I've lived on the street for twenty-four years, and the lot was made smaller because the original owners couldn't afford to buy more land. So, Mr. Crashley, who developed the street, made his lot bigger. So, the house next door, owned by Cosmo Mamalidi, who, there was a precedent set in two thousand and eight for how that house was done, he has a huge lot, so he has a large house, and it is, it is not appropriate for the tiniest lot on our street to suddenly have a house that is seven thousand six hundred square feet, and there is...
Finally, just irrespective of, you know, the architectural heritage and concern from, you know, people who live generally in the area.
Not generally.
I thought I heard you say that the impact on you directly is overlook and privacy, right?
Correct. But I'm not here, this isn't about me. I'd like to make this really clear. This isn't about me as the next door neighbor. This is about the voice of a community, and it is extraordinarily important that the heritage of this neighborhood be respected. We have two A-designated homes. There is a third A-designated home which sits directly below me, which has also filed an opposition to this, and so there are three A-designated houses in a line of four. I think that is very significant, and I think if you allow a two hundred and ninety-five percent increase in the FSI on this property, we can just say goodbye to heritage neighborhoods as we know them. There are plenty of places in this city where you can build a big, modern house to your liking, and I would encourage the applicant to consider that.
Thank you so much. I do have a quick question for you.
Absolutely.
On one of your slides, you identified the heritage homes and then your home, and I think it was some with the yellow, yellow dots that indicated...
Yep. So, second slide.
They belong to the owner or the developer?
The applicant currently resides at eighty-seven Roxborough.
Okay.
On the left. The subject property is number two, and the applicant has just bought a bungalow at one oh five. The applicant also previously owned number sixty-one. So, I live encircled by the developmental goals of the applicant.
Okay, thank you very much.
Very welcome.
Thank you for the presentation, very thorough.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Anybody else for a question at this point? No? Thank you kindly.
I just wanted to also mention that if this goes ahead, my house, if it were tripled in size, would be twelve thousand square feet, so that would be a really dangerous precedent for this committee to approve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers?
Yeah. Can we have the speaker at one one five, Yarmouth Road?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, I wonder if you could give us your name and address, please?
Sure, Michael Bootsma, at one one five Yarmouth Road, Toronto, Ontario, M six G one X three. So I'm the architect, along with Edward Jones of England, for this project. I am...
Sorry, you're the architect for the project that we're talking about?
I am, so I'm going to yield my time in the interest of the time of this panel.
But you're in support of the project?
I'm in support and can answer questions.
Give me a second, let me just double check if, how does this work?
Through you, Mr. Chair, no, we have to hear back from the applicant, and then if there's questions, you can respond to those questions as the architect.
Yeah.
Okay?
That's, that's fine.
So, let's have the applicant come back up. You sit together.
We don't have anybody else in opposition, I think.
We have no other speakers, right? So, this is the rebuttal.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. McGaffey, you've heard all the concerns. It's your, your fault, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair. I did hear the concerns, and I do want to reiterate a few of the points that I made. I mean, there is a reference to seventy-six hundred square foot house. This is seeking four hundred and forty-nine square meters, which is about four thousand eight hundred and thirty-two square feet. There is reference to A-designated houses being located on the block. This, this particular property is an unrated building. Number three, Old George, directly to the east is, or is in the, in the policies, an A-rated dwelling. It was significantly altered in two thousand and eight as part of a contested approval process for that application to add approximately fifty-eight hundred square feet to the existing structure. The, the main consideration that I would look at in terms of number three and number four, Old George, to the east, is that, you know, number four, for, for instance, there's no question, it's probably one of the most significant architectural houses in the city. It's a Ron Tom designed building, it's, it's A-rated, it's fantastic, it's terraced down into the ravine, and the entire dwelling is almost located below the top of slope, very similar to number three. Number three was also at the time designed as a bachelor residence by John Parkin, as Ms. Richardson noted. It was significantly altered through an application by Altus Group in two thousand and eight, ultimately approved by council in two thousand and eight. I believe it was then Gianni Petraccone Architects who completed the, the addition work to that. I did have some photos in my presentation of that condition. Again, the vast majority of that house is located below the top of slope, which is not something that is possible under current bylaw considerations. It was in two thousand and eight, prior to bylaw twenty thirteen coming into force. I mean, I can, the bit of Rosedale history would be that those regulations came in, were initially proposed by the province and the city because of Twenty-One Dale Avenue in South Rosedale, which did an apartment building entirely below the top of slope within a point three five density area. Talking about the window setback to the east, I have personally attended meetings with Ms. Richardson and to explain the plans virtually last summer or last October perhaps, last November. The window setback that's referenced is setback five point three seven meters from the property line. It is a, a small, narrow window into a stairwell. Any other windows that face the property line are setback at least twice the minimum bylaw requirement under the zoning bylaw, and only face into closets or small windows above, above a toilet in the bathroom. So, there has been careful design work to try and address these concerns, perhaps not to, to their satisfaction, but I, I don't think it's fair to characterize that, you know, everybody has gone unheard in this instance. I wanted to address the concerns of the NRA. I have also attended meetings with the NRA and to explain the proposals to them very early on. At the time, the NRA was initially somewhat supportive of it. They wanted to see renderings, what it looked like from the bottom of Roxborough Drive. They ultimately said that they would, you know, support the position of heritage staff and city council, and city council then approved this, and now we have letters from them in opposition to the proposal. With respect to precedent, you know, I'm, I'm always trepidatious of that argument. I don't think approval on one site should ever or can really ever be ported over to, to other specific sites, particularly in the context like this where you're dealing with significant environmental considerations in a heritage conservation district that is, you know, very heavily regulated, from forestry, from RNF P, from an architectural design standpoint, from the heritage standpoint. I've been involved in many, many files across North and South Rosedale. I've never approached them all in the same way, other than I always start from the back and work forward, I think, because the TRCA is, is the ultimate arbiter of, of that long-term stable top of slope line, subject to geotechnical reporting.
Mr. McGaffey, you've got twenty-nine seconds.
I, I got, I'm doing my best here, Mr. Chair. I, I think my last point, I'd close on, is that the concerns of overlook and privacy, again, the balconies have been designed and masked into the building to address those concerns with landscape screening and inset within to the building mass or oriented into non-admonity areas. So, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, thank you. Any questions at this point for Miss McGaffey? Mr. Lombardi? None at all? Okay. And perhaps we take it into committee and hear our perspectives. Okay. Perhaps I'll start off with, when I first saw the application, what went through my thinking. The first thing that really struck me was, apart from the number of people in opposition, and there were a considerable number of people in opposition, and reflecting a variety of views, but what really struck me was variance number three, because we're looking at the variances. And variance number three is approximately three hundred percent. I just find that excessive. I find that it's not minor. And so when looking at the four tests, that's the one that stands out the most for me. So it's one that I would find extremely difficult to support, so. Mr. Clay?
Thanks, Chair. I, first of all, thank you for the agent, for the presentation, it's very helpful, but also thank you to Ms. Richardson. I thought her presentation and her reflections on not only her own concerns, but the concerns of the community were, I think, very helpful to the committee, or at least to me anyways. I, I mean, we often, in Rosedale and Forest Hill and other more affluent residential neighborhoods, see a lot of concern about change. It's, it's, it's not uncommon to see an outpouring of opposition and concern for redevelopments and, and major developments. But in this case, I think it is significant that the community has rallied so ambitiously and aggressively against this, and I, I'm not sufficiently familiar with the heritage implications of this application, but I am at least sympathetic to the integration of a new structure into this particular enclave, because I think it does have a bearing on, you know, the historical and heritage nature of this little area. I, I take it that the applicant's concern about livable space and the constraints that the stable top of bank put on going back, but I was looking at the profile of the proposal relative to the existing structures in that area, and this is demonstrably higher, even though, you know, it's only three stories, but I think the prevailing pattern in this particular area is such that the height that's being proposed is, is significantly different and inconsistent with the prevailing pattern. Like you, Chair, I, I thought that the, the massing, as reflected through the increase in FSI, was significant. I don't know what the FSI would be for all the existing dwellings in there, but it is relative to the size of lot, and the rather large structure on the one side is quite large, but it also has a quite large lot area. So, this is an application which I, I suspect might benefit from a more thoughtful review at a different, in a different forum, rather than committee of adjustment, and, you know, I, I think, in my case, I'm, I'm not going to be able to support it today for those reasons, but, you know, if it does get appealed, then maybe a different forum might be an appropriate opportunity to have a more fulsome discussion about its merits.
Thank you, Mr. Clay. Mr. Lombardi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I concur with the comments from my colleagues. I will remind the applicant of the planning adage that a variance is a privilege, not a right. And when I look at this application, the, the two variances that are of major concern to me are number three, the massing and the, the FSI increase over three times what is permitted, as well as the size of, and the number of platforms being proposed. So, based on the fact that our mandate is to determine whether the, the variance is being requested meet or satisfy the four planning tests, and the courts have determined that if one variance fails, all the variances fail, in my opinion, I cannot support this application, so I won't be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardi. Mr. Reed?
Sure, I'll, I'll just chime in. I, I agree with what all my colleagues have said. I think the only thing I'd add is that I, I'm kind of sympathetic to the, the applicant because, because of the constraints of this site, and I, like all the other quite attractive buildings in the area, were built in a different time, right, where a lot of their GFA is spread down the ravine, actually in, within the, within the ravine. So, the fact that this is remaining within its footprint, I, I understand that constraint that they're battling against, and they're being held basically to a different standard, but I, I do agree that what's being proposed does not, it, it doesn't reflect the character of the neighborhood, and I think that this specific corner of the neighborhood does, is, is worth, worth retaining, the, the character of, of those special houses, so I, I can't support it either.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Mr. Clay?
Chair, I'll, based on all of our comments and input, I'll move to refuse this application.
Thank you, Mr. Clay. Do we have a second, now? Mr. Reed? Thank you. All those in favor of refusal? Thank you. You have the decision, Mr. McGaffey. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number four. Okay, item number four is thirty-one Powerhouse Street. Okay. Thirty-one Powerhouse Street. The purpose of the application is to alter the existing three-story mixed-use building by converting two office units into residential dwelling units. Committee had before it the following communication, plan of survey, site plans, floor plans and elevations, four photographs of trees on the property, a covering letter from the agent, decision numbers affecting the property, planning consultant report, site-specific zoning bylaws affecting the subject property, and we also have agency reports from Heritage Planning, the zoning examiner, and from Metrolinks. Okay.
Mr. Chair, we have the agent online, and there are no registered speakers.
Good morning, Mr. Rotundo. Mr. Rotundo, are you there?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair.
Hi, good morning. Name and address, please.
It's Frank Rotundo at sixty-six Rain Tree Crescent, Richmond Hill.
Thank you. We don't have anybody in opposition, and you've got basically one variance in front of us.
Yes.
That seems fairly minor, but let me just see if my colleagues would like some explanation perhaps, or have questions for you. Mr. Lombardi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just very quick, the proposal is to convert two office spaces into residential spaces. Can the applicant or the agent just explain what type of units, the size, number of bedrooms, et cetera, that are being proposed? I don't see that on the, on the plans. I could be wrong, but an explanation would be... I could be wrong, but an explanation would be helpful. Also, are all the proposed alterations internal?
Yes. Okay, so yes, all the renovation is internal. There's nothing, we're not doing anything outside of the footprint. And they're basically one-bedroom units with a den. We're adding a loft area, a little mezzanine. I think the square footage is about 1,000 square feet, I believe, per unit. Yeah, and that's it. It's pretty straightforward application.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardi. Mr. Reed?
Thanks, Chair. Kind of similar question for the applicant is the, what's the motivation behind this? Is it that the office units aren't renting out? I mean, I think the reason I asked this question is when this subdivision was approved, I think that the intent was probably to have a more commercial, non-residential hub in this building, and I'm just wondering if you can comment on that, please.
Yeah, we're having a hard time renting the one unit right now. It's been vacant for over a year, the existing office space, so the owner's looking to convert it. And then across the street, there's a new building that's been, being built or constructed, and that's five stories of commercial space.
Okay, that's helpful. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Let me just see if, I suspect there aren't any other questions. Perhaps we'll take it into committee at this point and render a decision for you. Okay, Mr. Reed?
Thanks, Chair. I'm happy to move a motion on this. I think that, I think this is reasonable. You're just increasing the two relatively small units, changing them from, changing them from office units into residential. And the fact that there is new office coming into the area, I think that's a positive thing, and that will allay concerns about kind of watering out the non-residential aspects of this neighborhood. So the fact that it's one variance and it's just increasing two small units of res, I think is supportable, so I'll move approval without condition.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Do we have a second, Mr. Lombardi? Oh, sorry. Thank you.
I'll support it also, but I note that there is a MetroLinks condition that's been requested. I'm wondering if we can include that?
Through you, Mr. Chair. It is the warning clause. Do you guys want to include that? We typically don't do the environmental easement, but the warning clause, okay.
Yeah, thank you. So I'll second that, that we got warning clause included as a condition.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardi. Thank you very much. All those in favor, this motion? Thank you. Mr. Rotundo, you have your approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. And we move on to item number, item number five. Item number five is a 97 Granby Street, and the purpose of the application is to alter the existing three-story townhouse dwelling by constructing interior alterations to the existing open-to-above area between the basement and ground floor level of the dwelling by enclosing the floor, increasing the area of habitable space. Committee had before it the following communication: Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, four photographs of trees on the subject property, covering letter from the agent, and some email correspondence between the agent and Heritage Planning.
Mr. Chair, we have the agent online, and there are no speakers for this item?
Thank you. Good morning, is this Sayed Shams?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. This is Shams Sayed with you.
Could we get your full name and address, please?
Thank you. This is Shams Sayed with McWays Inc., 6 Ripon Street, Mrs. Saga. I'm the authorized agent, acting on behalf of the property owners.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sayed. We do have, I think, is it, we have one person in, nobody in opposition? Okay, sorry.
That's the owner.
Oh, that's the owner. I give pardon here. Thank you. Mr. Sayed, let me just see if my colleagues have any questions for you or not. My understanding, did I read the purpose of this application? I did. We only have one variance in front of us, and it looks like it's all internal, an internal change. So let me see if my colleagues have any questions for you. None? Mr. Lombardi, any questions at all?
Just one quick one.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to the agent. I just want to make sure that, in my notes, I note that although the permitted FSI is one-time the area of the lot, it actually currently sits at 1.4. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the committee member. Yes, that is correct. Current FSI is 1.404.
Okay, thank you. And the proposed enclosed area is at the front of the building, on the first floor in the living area, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lombardi. Okay, perhaps we'll take it into committee now and look for a decision or some comments, perhaps. It looks like a fairly, sorry, I was just going to say, it's a very straightforward one. It is an internal alteration, and just from the response Mr. Lombardi got, the change is actually quite minimal. Yeah. So perhaps we'll look for a, Mr. Reed?
Yeah, Chair, I'm happy to bring a motion. I think the fact that this is all internal and it's just basically squaring off an open part of the first floor with the small square meters, that has zero impact on adjacent properties, and this is a minor variance that's being requested in amount and impact. So I move approval without condition.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Do we have a second, Mr. Clay? Thank you. All those in favor of approval? Thank you. You have a unanimous vote. Thank you, Mr. Sayed.
Thank you. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you, you too. And moving on to item number five, sorry, item number six. Item number six is 118 Bude Street. Purpose of the application: To construct a two-story ancillary building containing one garden suite in the rear yard of the property. There will be a total of three residential dwelling units on this lot, two units occupying the main dwelling, and one unit occupying the ancillary building. The existing sheds will be demolished. Committee had before it the following communication: Plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations, revised site plan, floor plans, elevations, four photographs of the subject property, copy of email correspondence between the agent and the assistant planner for community planning, and we also have staff reports from MetroLinks and Urban Forestry.
Mr. Chair, we have the agent online, and there are no speakers for this item?
Thank you. Is that Nelson Espinola? Nelson Espinola, are you there?
Hi, Nelson. You have been promoted to become a panelist, so you do have access to the mute, unmute buttons, and you have been muted from our end. Nelson, perhaps I'll give you a call. So please wait for a call, okay? We'll call you back. You have been muted?
Mr. Espinola, are you there?
He is there. Through you, Mr. Chair. Perhaps maybe we should move on to the next item, and then we can try and get a hold of Nelson.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the next item and come back, come back to Mr. Espinola when we have him online.
I'm here, members of the committee. This is Nelson here.
Good morning.
My apologies, somebody, some difficulties here.
Ah, the joys of tech.
Very good morning, this is Nelson.
Joys of technology. Mr. Espinola, I wonder if we could just get your name and address, please, for the record?
Yes, my name is Nelson Espinola, from 1726 St. Clair Avenue West.
Thank you very much. Let me just see, we don't have anybody in opposition to your application. You basically have two, two variances before us. Let me just see if my colleagues have any questions for you, or any concerns, or require a presentation, perhaps. Mr. Reed?
Thanks, Chair. I'm just noticing on your, your site plan, the area behind the garden suite, which is sodded, there's no real access to that, so I'm wondering how you're going to maintain, there's a fence on one side, no fence on the other, but you'd have to be going into your neighbor's property to get access to that. So can you talk about how that would be maintained?
Talking about the rear of the garden street, right?
That's right.
Okay, well, we have, from the first floor, we have a door that leads directly to that particular area. So that's all the access is going to be done.
Okay, well, when I was looking at the plans, it looked like that's just a window, right, the north elevation, Plan Page A7, it's just a window.
Okay, well, we can always convert that, that window into a door, a sliding door or a French doors to access that portion. That's not a problem. If you would like to put a condition that that window be converted into a door, we'll be happy to do so. Actually, it'll be a good, I think, a good thing for my client to access that, that rear yard there.
Right, okay. I understand what you're saying. The other question I had was just about the rear soft landscaping, rear yard soft landscaping, it's a bit low. Would you be open to providing your pathway as paved with permeable pavers instead of just concrete to make up for some of that shortcut?
Yeah, that's, that's more than fine with us, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lombardi has a question? Go ahead, Mr. Lombardi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to follow up on comments that, or questions my colleague just asked, the second variance that you're requesting deals with side yard setbacks. You're reducing them almost to nil, half a foot, if I can use traditional.
That's correct.
Why can you not maintain the required, the minimum required, you know, knowing what, why or the purpose of side yard setbacks?
Well, by complying with the, with the side yard setbacks, it would be greatly compromised in the design of our, of our floor plans, especially the second floor. Our intent was to have two bedrooms up there on the second floor, and as you can see, they are already sort of small as it is. They're 11 feet, 2 inches approximately. So by complying with the minimum side yard setback, it would make these rooms sort of unfunctional. And apart from that, I mean, that will be a space that will be sort of used for no purpose, really, rather than, you know, a bit more landscaped area.
All right, thank you. Thank you. That answers the question. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That's our, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Espinola, perhaps I do have a question for you, actually, and I'm just wondering, when I look at your, the site plan, the two requests that you have, the two variances, the one is for soft landscaping and the other is side yard setbacks, but you have the space at the back of the house, and as my colleague noted, there's a window indicated on the drawing, not a doorway. So what's the purpose of that space? Is it, wouldn't it make more sense if you push the, the proposed structure further back and eliminated the, that would eliminate, very likely eliminate the first variance that you're requesting? And if you pulled it in slightly from either side, you might either eliminate the side yard setbacks or reduce them even somewhat more. So I'm just wondering why that wasn't thought about?
Well, the minimum rear yard setback is 1.5 meters, and this is why we, we decided to obey that, that zoning regulation. We, we are going with the minimum rear yard setback required, requested or required by the zoning bylaws, so this is the reason why we kept it as 1.5 meters. And in addition to that, by bringing the garage, I mean, the garden street back a bit more, it would be very close to the neighbor sheds that, that are behind us.
Okay.
And we would like to have sort of a buffer zone there that, you know, we, you know, we would not compromise in the structure of those sheds. This is the reason why we decided to have the 1.5 meter setback as requested by the bylaw, and at the same time, you know, give us that landscaped area and an area where, you know, by having a door directly to the, to the rear, it would be an area where, you know, the tenants could use for, you know, sit down at a little table and enjoy the, the back. No, that's the main reason.
But presumably you'll have to revise your drawings of the rear of the structure to indicate access to the, to the back?
Yes, yes. We are going to, to convert that window into a, either French doors or a sliding glass door.
Okay.
That would give us access into that rear space.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You are.
Any other questions? No, I don't see any other questions, and we'll take it into committee now and look for a decision. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Reed?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I'm, I'm happy to move a motion here. I had, I mean, questions about that rear area, but I think that the applicant's open to making that usable is very positive, especially because it has, surrounded by buildings on three sides, basically, so that impact on the neighbors won't be there. I had some concerns about the side yard setbacks, but the fact that there's a concrete block garage on the one side and the other side is kind of hidden behind a shed, I think that those impacts would be minimal to the, to the adjacent neighbors. So I'm happy to move approval, subject to Urban Forestry Condition 3, and also tie it to the site plan, just to secure the permeable pavers that are noted in the rear yard.
Thank you.
Do you want a condition on the rear door, access door? I think...
Can we put that in as a condition?
Can we put a condition in that, that replace the window with some sort of access door?
Yes. Through you, Mr. Chair. We can do that, and we can also stipulate that it's to maintain that sodded area to the rear of the building.
Yeah, those are great, if we can add those two points. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could add one other?
Yes, by all means.
Again, a MetroLinks warning.
Yes, there's a comment, actually, from, from MetroLinks. Comment number five.
Yeah, so we don't need to include?
Yeah, it's a comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to Mr. Reed's proposal, the drawing number that we're referencing is A7, the rear, it's a rear elevation.
That's right, Chair.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reed. Do we have a second, Mr. Clay? Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. You have your, you have your approval, Mr. Espinola. Thank you.
Thank you, and have a good day.
Thank you, too. Okay, moving on to item number seven. Okay, moving on to item number seven. Item number seven is 73 Kennedy Road, oh, sorry, Kennedy Avenue. Purpose of the application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a front two-story addition with basement extension below, front covered porch and stairs, a partial third-story addition, and a front dormer addition, a rear rooftop deck above the second story, partially covered rear ground floor deck with stairs, and a rear second-story balcony above. The existing rear ground floor deck and the rear basement walkout will be demolished, also to install a front yard parking path. The committee had before the following communication, copy of Plan of Survey, Site Plan, Floor Plans and Elevations, and Arborist Report, and we have staff reports from Urban Forestry, TRCA, and, actually, there are two of them from Urban Forestry. We have support letters, form letters, from 18 different folks on Kennedy Avenue, DeForest Road, Kennedy Avenue, Windermere Avenue. We also have correspondence in opposition from, I think it's in Decree Crescent, DeForest Road, yeah, and DeForest Road, that's it. Okay.
Through the chair, we have the agent and registered speakers online.
Thank you. Mr. Dome, are you there?
Yes, my name is Joe Dome, 133 Torresdale Avenue, agent for the owners.
Hi, good morning, and thank you for being here. We do have one person in opposition, so we shall need a presentation, please.
Yes, the owners would like to alter their existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing the aforementioned additions to accommodate their family needs, and this is while working within the constraints of the existing dwelling's unique position on the lot. It is unique among the dwellings on the street. The house, the existing house is significantly set further back from the front lot line than the neighboring dwellings, so much so that the front main wall is nearly behind the rear main walls of the two adjacent dwellings, as can be shown on the location map on screen. The rear of the property is also subject to TRCA and RNFP in relation to the long-term stable top of slope. Therefore, building addition to the rear of the dwelling is not an option, so only a deck and balcony is proposed. So the reasonable choice is to propose an addition to the front of the dwelling in this case. And we have 13 variances proposed. Variance one and eight refer to the proposed north side yard setback of 0.76 meters for the addition of the rear platform. This is continuation of the existing north side yard setback of the dwelling. It's also greater than the setback of the north side neighboring dwelling at number 85, while the south side yard setback of the proposal more than complies with the 0.9 meter bylaw. Variance four and five refer to the proposed height and side main wall height of 10.83 meters and 10.62 meters respectively. And variance eight pertains to the proposed FSI of 0.91. Impact is mitigated here by the fact that with the addition, the dwelling is set back, is still set back significantly behind the front main walls of the, of both adjacent neighbors, approximately five meters behind their front main walls. And the sloped roof design minimizes impact from the streetscape. And both the front and the rear of the proposed third story are significantly stepped back. The portion of the third floor to which the height variance applies is relatively small, as the length of the third floor is proposed at mostly nine meters in length, whereas the remainder of the dwelling length meets the bylaw for height. And variance number six is an existing condition. Variance number seven for the proposed depth is technical in nature due to the distance, again, from the, the minimum front yard setback to the existing rear wall. Variance number three is proposing a parking space in the front yard, entirely located on private property. Essentially, the existing parking space is proposed to be moved forward in conjunction with the, the front addition of the dwelling. And we've spoken with transportation, they don't have concerns, an application for front yard parking would need to be made with the, the polling requirement. Variances 10 to 13 refer to setbacks to the long-term stable top of slope of the proposed platform and a portion of the, the rear second floor roof. The entirety of the third story, as well as the, the rear third-story balcony, is located outside of the, the long-term stable top of slope. The, the owners have put a lot of effort into communicating with the neighbors. They received 23 form letters in support submitted on file. We have read the, the four letters in opposition from residents, and, and many comments referred to impact to the, to the slope at the rear. And as this property is subject to TRCA and RNFP, they have no concerns with the requested variances as per the review of the application, including the geotechnical report. In their report, it states, as part of the TRCA permit process, "A geotechnical report identifying the long-term stable top of slope was reviewed by TRCA geotechnical engineering staff, and we agree with the long-term stable top of slope as identified on the provided site plan. And given that the proposal has regard for the existing development setbacks and all works are located outside of the erosion hazard, TRCA has no objections to the proposed variances." We're also aware of the ongoing applications submitted next door by number 71 for consent to sever and to build a new foreplex in addition to the existing duplex that has been contentious in the area. And just to clarify, this application is smaller in scope with single-family dwelling additions. The owners really have tried to find the right balance for this unique situation on the lot and the, with the existing dwelling, and to minimize impact with the proposal. Planning staff have no concerns with the application, and overall, we feel that, that in context, the application is reasonable and might-
Mr. Dome, sorry to interrupt, but you're running out of time. Couple seconds, oh, you're done.
Yes, I was just about to say, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. By the way, before I, Mr. Clay's got a question for you, but are you aware?
I know we've got someone wanting to speak to this, but I, I didn't hear the applicant speak to the forestry report.
Yeah, forestry-
That's important. Forestry has recommended refusal of the depth variance, in part to protect the tree, which I think needs a little bit of an explanation to us, because you're not going any further deep on the lot, right? You're coming forward, and there is a rather large tree that looks like it's in the middle of the lot. So maybe you could speak to forestry's recommendation and also what your intent is with respect to the tree in question in the front yard?
Yes, would you be able to, to put up the, the Arborist Report? The, or the tree protection plan? I'm sorry, apologies, if you'd be able to zoom in a bit further toward the, the front of the dwelling? So, so it shows tree number three not to be removed at the front of the dwelling. So the, there would be injury there. We didn't actually see the urban forestry report attached to the file ahead of time. It, it wasn't at least visible to us on the public file. We had the, the TRCA report, we had the RNFP, but we did not see the urban forestry comments regarding that tree. But that tree is, I, I believe in the, in the urban forestry comments, they mentioned removal, but that is to be preserved. There was a city tree on the front, on, on the city boulevard portion of the lot that the city had removed earlier this year, so that wouldn't be relevant but, to the application. But the tree number three is shown to be retained.
Okay, and there is an advisory report, that's unfortunate. So can we just pull up the forestry? The applicant clearly hasn't seen that, can we pull up the forestry staff report? There's two in the sup. One denying the, the variance number seven, but also an advisory report suggesting some changes. That's the advisory report. Can we just go to the refusal one? Just so the applicant is aware. It is dated October 7th, so I'm surprised you haven't seen it.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't seem to be on the public file as far as the, any of the submitted reports. The last, the last item that was posted on there is dated October 14th, the, the last letter of objection.
Okay, so Joe, can you just see that? Can you read that there? That's the refusal, or deny variance number seven, but you're, what you're saying is, you're, you're planning to protect tree number three?
That's, that's correct, that's what's shown on the, on the Arborist Report.
Okay.
I was just wondering with that one, Mr. Clay, if we were to deny variance number three and approve the others?
Number seven.
Sorry, number seven, I beg your pardon. That the agent could then address that issue separately, at least they'd have the approval, or would that be problematic?
Well, again, if, so the, the variance he's seeking is depth, which is, I think, an existing condition, right? They're not going back any further, right?
No. That's right.
I, I don't know how denying that would help them, because they would be in violation of the bylaw.
And essentially, the depth variance would not change with any changes to the built form.
Right, so I think, so I'm a little bit confused with forestry's, I mean, why forestry would put that recommendation in? Because the depth doesn't appear to affect tree number three. So in terms of going forward in the front, the advisory report talks about maybe making some changes to the front porch. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm taking up, I know someone wants to speak to this item, so maybe, maybe we can hold that, Chair?
I, I think I can speak to the, the tree that they're referring to, I believe. That tree, that tree may have already been removed by the neighbor.
So this is the one in the advisory report, the red oak?
I believe, i-if it's the front porch that is, that they're referring to, yeah. I, I think that tree has already been removed by the neighbor, because the front porch would not be affecting any trees as they are currently.
Okay.
Okay, perhaps we move to the person in, in opposition and listen to them. Thank you. We'll come back to you, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Nicholas, you have been muted.
Good morning, yes.
Good morning, Mr. Singh, name and address, please.
Yes, Nicholas Singh, I represent Swansea Area Paris. For the technician, at the end of my presentation, I will ask-
Sorry, did we lose you? Mr. Singh?
Hi, Nicholas, you have been muted. Yeah, through the chair, we're gonna mute Nicholas Singh.
Thank you.
Hi, Nicholas. Again, you have full access to the mute and unmute buttons, we've muted you, so please look into your device. Also, you have been promoted to become a panelist, so you do have full access to the volumes and mute, mute buttons.
Mr. Singh?
Hi, Nicholas, the committee will make an attempt to call you, okay? Please be on hold.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Lombardi.
Yes, while we have the agent, still have a question?
By all means, yeah. Mr. Dome, we have a question for you.
Yes.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I, I visited the site, and the sighting of, of the particular existing dwelling is unique in the neighborhood. Can you explain, perhaps historically, if you can, that particular sighting of, of that house? And also, can you, just for the, the benefit of those who don't, are lay individuals, what's the difference between building length, measuring building length and building depth?
Yes, I'll, I'll begin with the second portion there. So the building length would be measured from the front main wall of the proposed dwelling to the rear main wall, whereas the dwelling depth is from the, the minimum front yard setback to the rear main wall of the proposal. So that's, that's where, you know, over here, in this particular case, the depth is considered to be larger just because of the front main walls of the neighbors are so much further, and that's where the required minimum front yard setback would be taken from. And as, as for historically, the reason why the house is set back so much further, I believe the house actually used to face the opposite direction. And there was, I believe, a driveway that would go up the, the slope. And so obviously, that is, the, the context has changed significantly, and that would explain the situation.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Singh, have you returned?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, sorry about that. Okay, you have your five minutes, sir.
Okay. Yes, good morning. For, for, excuse me. Yes, today we have an application with 13 variances, and four of those, number 10 to 13, are under the jurisdiction of the Toronto Region Conservation Authority, and we defer to their expertise in addressing those issues. I know you've discussed those already, and I will leave, leave that to your discussion. Still, there remain nine variances that constitute catalysts in what they represent as a building that appears to be too wide, too tall, with walls that completely ignore the bylaws, and a building that is too deep. Variance one and nine bring the new addition close to the neighbor's lot lines, requiring variances for both the north and south side yard setbacks. I point out that we're not looking at variances for the existing house, we are looking at variances for the new addition. And there's no reason why, given the size of the proposed FSI, that the new addition cannot comply with the required setbacks. We're talking about a building that proposes 345 square meters of living space excluding the basement. And I'd point out that neither of the adjacent neighbors signed these supporting letters. Regarding the height, the building is too high in two different ways. Variance four seeks to increase the overall height by almost a meter. And variance five seeks main walls that are three meters beyond the bylaws. Three meters over the permitted 7.5 meters is considerably beyond the permissions of the bylaw, and is not minor, and does not maintain the intent and purpose of the bylaws. Regarding the depth, I appreciate that it did measure from the front setback, and there is some consideration there. However, at 22.61 meters, it doesn't fit the bylaws at all, and is extreme. The floor space is at the top of the next level up for zoning in Swansea. The zoning for apartment areas is one, and the variance of 0.91 doesn't maintain the intent and purpose of the 0.6 zoning. So to sum up this section, individually, the variances for wall height- So to sum up this section, individually, the variances for wall height and FSI represent a disruption to the character of the neighborhood and we recommend not approving them. But collectively, the, the variances for this application beg to be redesigned to be a better fit with the neighborhood and we recommend that to the committee. We also note the prohibition on parking pads in the area. Can I get on screen, please, the public notice? That's file 11 on the committee's AIC, in particular, page three at the bottom. Here we have the statement from the committee's public notice iterating the four tests. A little bit further on the, on the screen, please, below the, below the variances, on the public notice.
Nicholas, you can proceed.
Hello, could I have on screen the public notice, please?
We'd have to get a copy of the public notice that went out, but you can continue speaking.
Okay, this is in the AIC file and it is on the, on the committee's.
Yes, we know that, but right now what we have before us is just the, the purpose in variances, not the actual public hearing notice, which we would have to retrieve, which will take some time. So you can refer to that, we are well aware of our notices.
Okay. So the committee's public notes iterates the four tests, reviewing all that has been put before the committee today. There is no evidence that these variances pass the four tests. We maintain there's no evidence that they maintain the intent and purpose of either the bylaws or the official plan. And in particular, there's no evidence that the variances comply with policy 4.1.5 of the official plan. There has been no examination of the immediate and broader context as required by the official plan, neither in previous submissions or in today's presentation from the applicant. And as for section 45 of the Planning Act, which is mentioned at the start of the hearings this morning, the committee is required to apply these tests before approving the variances. So in conclusion, we recommend that the variances should not be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. Let me just see if my colleagues have any questions for you. None. Seeing none, we'll move on. Do we have anybody else in opposition or just Mr. Singh? Okay, so we'll go back to Mr. Dome. Sorry, to Mr., yes, to Mr. Dome. Mr. Dome?
Yes, thank you.
If you don't mind providing some rebuttal to Mr. Singh's comments?
Um, yes, I would just like to point out, I believe it was mentioned, that requiring setbacks for both sides, where in reality, we're requesting a, a small side yard setback on the north side only. The, the south side does more than comply with the bylaw. And it is consistent with setbacks in the area. Right next door to the north, number 85, has a, a smaller setback. And to address the, the height, the comments regarding the height, I think it, it is relevant in this case with the, the distance from the front lot line that even with the proposed addition, there's going to be significant distance from the lot line, the, the front lot line. The step backs to the third story mitigate impact. That's step backs on the front and on the rear. And the sloped roof design also mitigates impact of streetscape. There will be one small dormer that is facing the street as far as the, the third floor. And the third floor is only nine meters, about nine meters in length and would have a relatively minimal impact. And we do feel that, you know, this proposal is a very good balance, given the, the constraints for minimizing the impact, a lot of the variances that we, we looked at, like the depth is technical, the height of the first story. That is an existing condition. There, so there are, the setback to the, the long-term stable top of slope. Essentially, it's not building out any farther than what the existing dwelling is, is currently. It's, there is a balcony proposed and a rear deck and TRCA has already looked at that and, and they don't have any concerns. And there, there is essentially just a portion of the roof, the second story, that is built above the, the existing. That would really be the, the extent of the, of the dwelling itself that is built beyond the existing at the rear, but it is not extending further to the rear. And overall, we really do feel that the, the relevant agencies, so they have looked into it and they, they don't have the issues as far as the, the slope at the rear is concerned. And as far as the, the massing goes, we, we do feel that the, the context here is important as far as, in terms of making the decision, mitigating impact. And, and we feel that the, the conditions here successfully do that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dome. Let me just see if my colleagues have any questions for you. If not, we'll take it into committee for our discussion. No, no questions? All right. Perhaps I'll just start off. One of the interesting things, and Mr. Dome just used the word context. And I think in this particular case, this existing structure is set very far back, even compared to its neighbors. So it's a huge front. And I think forestry is concerned about that one large tree. So the Arborists report, or the Tree Protection Plan identifies the trees that will be protected. So it kind of negates forestry's comment. For this particular property, there's really nowhere for them to expand other than coming forward. And from the site plan, the, the new, the proposed new addition doesn't quite come as far as the existing house, houses on either side, actually. So despite the fact that there are 13 variances requested, I think this is a proposal that certainly I feel comfortable supporting. Mr. Reed?
Yeah, I agree with you. I think the context is everything on this one. But I, I do still have concerns about the health of that one tree. And I, I, I don't think that a denial, I think, I think forestry got the, the variance wrong in terms of the one they, they're proposing be denied. I think they could have maybe tied it to the FSI. But regardless of that, I think if we approve it, I, I think we should have from forestry condition two. Because there, there are, I think in their advisory letter, they, they did include some very good points that I think would improve the chances of that tree remaining healthy and viable. And one other thing, I, I think also, the, the applicant did talk about the massing. And the sidewall height looks really large, that three meters is a, is a big number. But I think it's quite limited in terms of its extent. So I think that if we approve, we should also tie it to the, the elevations, particularly the side elevations. But I think all elevations, because that massing, the way they've structured the, the massing of the house does limit the impacts on the neighbors and, and in terms of neighborhood character.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Mr. Clay?
Uh, thanks Chair. Yeah, I, I would agree with both you. I, I'm familiar with this area, so this is a historical anomaly. That is not surprising that, you know, is, is the subject of these kinds of redevelopment plans. I, I would just note two additional things. One, we have 23 letters of support, which is a fairly positive thing, from neighbors on DeForest and Kennedy. I, I did note that there was some opposition from a couple of people in, on DeForest around the corner. One of them suggested that, that maybe because there is a bit of an overlooked concern from the balconies in the rear, that we could, we might want to consider screening on the north and south sides of both the, I guess it's third and second story balcony. I think that's a reasonable request, given the juxtaposition of this, the existing structure and those balconies relative to the neighbors, particularly on DeForest. So I think that if, that would be something we might want to consider.
I agree with that. Mr. Lombardi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I agree with most of the comments from our, my colleagues here. I did have a concern with the, the height of the exterior side main walls. But I think the, the massing is appropriately applied in, in the elevations. I do have a concern, though, with variance number three, with allowing a parking space in the front, front yard. I'm wondering if my colleagues would have any, any concerns with, with that particular variance.
I'll, I'll just speak to it from my perspective. Typically, what happens is transportation pretty routinely waves in when they have a problem with that. And in this case, they didn't. There is a curb cut and it looks like there is an existing, call it a driveway, but some sort of drive there. And it is wholly, I think, on this property's property. So it's not a, a right of way. So in this instance, I, personally, I, I wouldn't necessarily have a problem because it's not a new pad or a new cut, it's, it's utilizing the existing one.
Right.
Personally, I, what do you guys think?
I, I agree with you. Actually, there's an existing driveway.
And you know, on the, on the tree issue, Peter's right. I mean, if we put a condition in here that they have to clear urban forestry, then I'm comfortable with that. I, I think Peter's right. I think they, somehow there is a miscommunication in terms of refusal. Like, that, that just doesn't make sense to me. So I'm happy, Chair, if you want to move this along.
Please go ahead, Mr. Clay.
I'm happy to move that we approve this application. Subject to forestry condition number two. Peter, you wanted to tie it to the, all elevations? Tie it to the elevations. I think if you guys agree, I'd like to have a condition for screening on the third and second story balcony on the north and south sides.
North and south.
Was there any other condition anyone thought of? That's it?
I think that.
Okay, then that's the motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second, Mr. Lombardi?
Just, just could you reiterate what the conditions that were asked for here?
First condition was forestry number two.
Right.
The other condition was to tie construction to all the elevations blends. And the third item was providing privacy, privacy screening on the third, second and third floors on the east.
No, north and south.
Sorry, north and south on the rear.
All right, thank you.
I think that's, that's it. So are you seconding that, Mr. Lombardi? Thank you. Okay, all those in favor with those conditions? Thank you. Mr. Dome, you have your approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Not sure if anyone needs a five or 10 minute break?
Yes, please.
Okay, we'll do 10 minutes.
Okay, we'll do 10 minutes.
Is even stranger because the bifurcation of the former zoning and the current one is through the middle of a building. So, yeah, it's not a material change to the area. Just some of the funkiness from old Toronto.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? No? Okay, we can take it into committee now. I think both of them are very minor. From one times to 1.1 FSI change request. And that was all that's requested. Look for a motion, Mr. Clay?
Sure. Sure. I think for the reasons you just mentioned, this is an extremely minor variance. And I think the committee generally appreciates when two adjacent semis combine together to do, I imagine in this case, a joint project and one which is equal on both sides. That's always a more efficient way of utilizing all the resources. So it's a positive development, no major impact. I'll move... Do you want separate ones for 64 and 66, or can we just combine them? Just combine? I'll move approval of both items number nine and 10, 64 and 66 Logan Avenue. For approval, there are no conditions.
Thank you. Do we have a second, Mr. Lombardi? Thank you.
I consider them technical variances, so I'll support and second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. You have your approval, Mr. Brenda?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Logan, Logan, Logan. And now we move on to item number 11. 310 Broadview Avenue. Purpose of the application is to alter the existing two-and-one-half-story semi-detached mixed-use building by constructing a rear three-story addition. There'll be a total of one commercial unit, a hair salon, and two residential dwelling units on this lot. One existing commercial unit occupying the first level, one existing dwelling unit occupying the second and third levels, as well as one new dwelling unit occupying the first, second, and third levels. Committee had before the following communication: copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, four photographs of the subject property, covering letter from the agent, tree site plan, a zoning map. And we also have a 31 signature petition in support from owners and occupants of properties on Broadview Avenue, Dundas Street East, First Street, Gerard Street, Hamilton Street, Mount Stevens Street, Monroe Street, Queen Street East, St. Bartholomew Street, Trolley, Crescent, and Wellesley Street.
Through the chair, we have the agent online, and there are no registered speakers.
Thank you. Good morning, oh, good afternoon, oh, good morning still, Mr. Mazatali, are you there?
Yes, thank you. Good morning.
Name an address, please.
Yes, Joseph Mazatali, 608 Oriole Parkway, Toronto.
Thank you very much. We don't have anybody in opposition, there's just one person who's observing, but not in opposition. But let me just see if my colleagues have any questions for you or would like a presentation. Mr. Reed has a question for you.
Thanks, Chair. This is more of a technical question, just for variance two, it seems like it's missing some language. The minimum required rear yard setback is the greater of 25% of the lop depth, and so it seems like it should be comma or something else, or not including the greater than. Do you know what that might be? Is that just something that was omitted by accident, or do you have insight on that?
Well, actually, I'm glad you brought that up. I agree with you. I would trust, I don't know how to answer your question, I would trust that the zoning examiner wrote it intentionally that way, and that that's the only variance regarding that issue.
Right. Maybe Sabrina, would you have any insight on that?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I'm just looking at the zoning review at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair, the variance should just read the minimum required rear yard setback is 9.38 meters.
Thank you. Thank you.
So we can make that...
As an amendment?
That change, yeah, that revision.
Thank you. Mr. Lombardi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to the agent. Just a question, I'm looking at the site plan, and I don't see a front or east elevation shown. I could be wrong, that would show the proposed addition. Is there... Is that there?
No, I don't, it's not drawn, so the front elevation of the house is existing, but this is the rear addition. The only portion that might have been drawn would have been the top of the top floor, but that's quite a, it's facing the existing house anyway, so it's not for public viewing anyway.
All right, thank you.
I take it that's the rear extension? Okay, thank you. Any other questions? No? None? Okay. Mr. Mazatali, we'll take it into committee now and look for a decision for you. Okay. I think this is one of those applications that sometimes throws you off, but it actually looks like a fairly straightforward one, given the location, 310 Broadview Avenue, very commercial area. I think it's a supportable, supportable application from my perspective. Mr. Reed?
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I agree with you. I think that the variances do look large, but this is a Main Street condition, and the majority of these lots are built out almost to their full length, including immediately adjacent to this one. So I do think that this is just kind of the reurbanization of a Main Street, and it's providing additional units on this street that does have decent transit access, and so I think that's a positive, too. So I'll move that we approve the application with variance two revised in a technical way, and without condition.
Thank you. Do we have a second now? Thank you. Mr. Lombardi, seconds. All those in favor? Thank you. Mr. Mazatali, you have your approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to... Item number 12 is 53 Oriole Parkway. 53 Oriole Parkway, the purpose of this application is to construct a new three-story detached dwelling with a rear east yard, ground floor deck with stairs and accessible lift, a side north yard porch with stairs, a side north yard, north yard basement walkout, and an integral garage with a new driveway abutting Wilberton Road. The existing driveway and detached garage abutting Wilberton Road will be maintained and unaltered. The committee had before the following communication: copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, eight photographs of trees on the subject property, arborist's report, and we also have commenting agency report from transportation engineering, and urban forestry. And we also have six form letters in support, so signed by owners and occupants on Wilberton Road, Oriole Parkway, and Wilberton Road.
Through the chair, we do have the agent online, and one interested speaker...
Thank you.
At this time.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Maybe we'll just see if we can unmute the interested speaker and see, you know, they might just have a question or...
Yeah. Good idea, thank you.
Okay. Sabah, you have been muted?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Is this Nabil?
Yeah, Sabah.
Are you...
No, I don't wish to speak.
Are you speaking in opposition? Sorry, didn't hear.
No, I'm not speaking in opposition. Actually, I'm not speaking at all, I changed my mind, I don't wish to speak.
Okay. Thank you very much, thank you. So we'll go to the agent now.
Thank you.
Mr. Laslow?
Yes, good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon.
My address is 193 Row Avenue.
Terrific, thank you so very much. Let me just see if my colleagues, we don't have anybody in opposition, but let me just see if we have a need for a presentation from my colleagues or some questions for you.
Chair, I think there is a force to refuse on this one, so I think we should probably have the agents speak to that.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Laslow, are you aware that forestry has recommended denial of variance number one?
Yes, very aware, thank you. And I am, you know, in an opportunity to maybe make things easier for everybody, I'm more than happy to remove and eliminate variance number one altogether.
Okay, so we can go ahead and remove that, and so this will be an amended application?
Thank you.
Okay, great, so we'll remove variance item number one. And there's still a forestry one condition, but it's not a denial. Thank you. Okay. We still need a presentation or...
Other questions?
Questions? Okay. Mr. Reed's got a question for you.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, my question is around variance eight, the side yard landscaping, which is, it's a very large request, and it's clearly driven because you have two large driveways. And I'm wondering what the need to have two driveways is driven by, and if there's any way that you can improve this situation, this variance number eight.
I believe we can drastically improve things, and we've already submitted an updated site plan to the committee, and it shows that the driveway is being removed and the curb cut is being filled in for that detached garage at the back. So that, any driveway leading to that garage currently will be disappearing.
I don't believe we have a copy of that revised site plan, we don't have it. So let me just see if my colleagues' staff can pull up something. Is this a revised site plan? When did you submit it?
It was just last week, and transportation is even aware of it, because they, I know, have no objections to the proposal, and it's based on the curb cut being filled in. And they actually, I believe, make reference to that on their email that they forwarded.
Yeah, they did, and I wasn't understanding that comment from them, because I thought they misunderstood the situation, but you're saying that they're saying that in relation to your revised plans.
Correct. So there will be no driveway leading to that existing detached garage, and along with that, the curb cut's going to be filled in.
So there's a challenge that we don't have a copy of that, and it's not showing up at all, apparently.
So does that change your variance number eight?
No, it does not. It actually does not, it's sort of, you know, with regards to that variance number eight, I understand that, yes, you know, we're asking for about 25% when we're required to be at 75%. I think in this case here, it's justified, because first of all, we have, like our front yard, we have 100% landscaping, and the driveway now is being removed, which, yes, as was mentioned, is not included in that calculation, but it definitely does increase the amount of green space overall on the property. And our rear yard landscaping conforms to the bylaw. There's a large expanse of green space running along Wilberton, I know that's not included in the calculation, but again, visually, definitely helps to kind of minimize the variance being requested in the smaller amount of landscaping. And so I believe, again, it's kind of justified in this case, for those reasons.
I mean, I guess one follow-up question to that is that, does, if your garage no longer, the detached garage no longer has a driveway, is it still a garage, or does that become an ancillary building, which may change the purpose of your application?
If, you know, and definitely correct there, if, for whatever reason, that garage, or again, now it may be referred to as an ancillary building, or a shed, or something else other than a garage, if it causes any issues whatsoever with our application, we're just going to demolish it altogether.
Okay, because there may be some, it may be oversized for a shed or something like that.
Yeah, definitely. Correct.
Okay, I understand what you're saying.
Okay. So is that something you'd like to add to the purpose for, as an amendment to it? That the detached garage would be demolished?
Are you asking me?
Yes, I am, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
No, no problem.
We, if we can maintain it, we would like to, again, we are definitely getting rid of the driveway leading up to it. If, for whatever reason, when it comes time to submit for permit or to get our zoning certificate issued, if that garage at that point causes any concern, we will modify our application into the city for permit or zoning certificate and just say we're removing it.
Okay, but that's for a later stage. But so you are saying that the existing driveway is going to be eliminated?
Correct.
So that will require an alteration in the purpose? So we'll have to reword that last sentence, that the existing driveway will be removed?
Yes.
And the detached garage will be maintained?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So Mr. Lombardi's got a question for you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you to the agent. If you're removing the driveway to that garage and removing the curb cut, I really don't understand, then, the purpose of that large structure. It can't be technically considered a garage in the sense of housing vehicles. It would seem to be a bit too large to be a shed. Is it not something that you'd want to consider at this point?
There has been discussion with the client in the past, the idea is that it may be converted into a garden suite in the future. So that was one of the main reasons for retaining it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Just a last question for me. So if you're removing the existing driveway, is any portion of that driveway somehow related to variance number eight? Would that change any of that?
Unfortunately not, because that's considered to be in the rear yard of the property.
Oh, good, all right, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions at this point? None? Okay. Oh, hold on, Mr. Lombardi's got a question for you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to follow up on that, the answer that you just provided regarding that rear structure, have you undertaken a review in terms of the possibility of converting that to a garden suite? And do you know whether the current footprint would allow such a structure and would permit a viable garden suite? Just curious.
Thank you for the question. I'm almost sure that if this, if we did end up converting it in the future, there would be variances associated with doing so. That's, I'm not sure if that necessarily answers the question. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, we'll take it into committee and look for some discussion and then a decision. Okay, who wants to take this on? Mr. Reed?
Thanks, Chair, I don't mind starting. No, I was concerned about variance eight, certainly, but I do understand the agent's perspective on that in terms of, it is a corner lot, and it does provide a lot of boulevard greenery, and the fact that they largely will be improving the rear yard, which reads as a side yard to me still, improving that situation with the removal of a very large driveway. I just thought two large driveways for this one site was inappropriate, so I'm glad to see them take that away. So I think what they're proposing apart from that is all quite fine, and the variances are really pretty small, even though there's a list of nine, I think that they're quite reasonable, and I think the impact of them is very small. So I'll just move approval of this application as amended, so I think the last sentence of the purpose should remove, should be, the existing driveway will be removed, and the detached garage will be maintained and unaltered, but I'm not sure if we should say, or maybe even a note for the record, that that may not qualify as a garage anymore? I don't know if you have a perspective on that, Sabrina?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I mean, are we gonna, are you gonna consider putting in a condition to restore that curb cut?
Yes, the transportation condition.
From transportation services?
Yeah.
Okay, and then it'll just remain as an ancillary building?
Okay.
Right? That contains a parking spot?
Okay.
But they won't be able to access because...
Right.
There's no driveway there.
Correct.
Right? So we'll just, we'll just stay in a detached ancillary building.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's great.
Okay, one-story building.
Perfect. Okay, so that's with the amended purpose and also with the amended, amended application with variance one being deleted, as was removed by the applicant? And I think, just for safety's sake, let's keep urban forestry condition one, just so they can, they can have a fulsome review of that.
Yeah. Okay, sounds good. Do we have a second now? Mr. Lombardi, thank you. All those in favor of the amended application? Thank you. You have your approval, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And we move on to item number 13. Item number 13 is 137 Margarita Street. Purpose of the application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear second-story addition, complete third-story addition with a rear balcony, a rear ground-level porch, and a basement walkout. There'll be a total of two residential dwelling units on this lot, one unit within the basement level and one unit to occupy the first, second, and third levels. Committee had before the following communication: copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, four photographs of the subject property, and staff report from urban forestry.
Through the chair, we have the agent online, and there are no registered speakers.
Okay, Margarita.
Hello, good afternoon, Chairman and committee members. My name is Eddie Perez. I'm at 537 Rogers Road.
Hi, good afternoon. Sorry, Mr. Perez, thank you.
You're welcome.
Welcome. Let me just see, we don't have anybody in opposition, so we don't need a presentation from that perspective, but let me just see if my colleagues have questions for you or if they require a presentation. No? Yeah, it looks fairly straightforward, we've got four variances before us, and none that seem too problematic from my perspective. Maybe I'll just ask a question about second-floor balcony and the third-floor balcony. I'm not sure if you've got privacy screens on, I believe it's, the second-floor balcony may require a privacy screen on the south side, and the third floor on the south and north sides. Mr. Perez, are you aware of the balcony story?
Yeah, we could provide him, we have no problem with that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Perez. I think it's the second floor that doesn't have overlook on both sides as the third floor does. Any other questions, comments? None? Okay. Take it into committee. Anybody want to move on this one? Mr. Clay?
Sure, Chair. Oh, go ahead, Dino.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I consider this to be an eclectic neighborhood in terms of architecture and design. I think the massing is typical of the neighborhood, two-story homes, some with dormers, and with three stories as well, and I don't see a problem with this. Obviously, there is an urban forestry condition, I would put a motion forward with that condition, but I'll wait to hear from my colleagues.
And perhaps, Mr. Lombardi, if we could add the privacy screening, second floor and third floors?
On the north and south?
Second floor on the south and third floor on both north and south.
Yeah, I'm happy to second that, I agree, this is a very eclectic neighborhood, and it's a lot of two-and-a-half stories, so I don't think the height would measurably depart from what the sort of norm is. And this is a street that's very much in transition, so you're seeing a whole lot more rental accommodation, and this is a good addition, I think, to that stock, so I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Clay. All those in favor? Thank you. Mr. Perez, you have your approval, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, with...
Those two conditions, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Chair, can I just jump in for one moment?
Yes, please.
Just going back to number 12, the 53 Oriole Parkway, I'm not sure if, I know we've talked about it during comments, but I don't think I formally put in the transportation condition as a condition? Or do you have it down?
I have it written down to restore curb cut.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay. All right, moving on to item number 14. Item number 14 is 1043, 1045, 1047 College Street. Purpose of the application is to construct two new five-story townhouse buildings, municipally known as 1043, 1045, and 1047 College Street. There'll be a total of 11 residential dwelling units, six within the west block and five within the east block, each to contain an integrated garage and a rooftop terrace. Committee had before the following communication: copy of plan of survey, site plan, and floor plans, and elevations, eight photographs of the subject property, covering letter from the agent, arborist's report, presentation materials from the agent, staff reports from community planning and urban forestry, 12 form letters in support from College Street and Gladstone Avenue. We have correspondence in concern or interest from the solicitor for an address on Gladstone Avenue, and we also have opposition, correspondence in opposition from one person, no address provided.
Through the chair, we have the agent here in person, and there are speakers online and in person as well.
Thank you very much. Welcome. Mr. Savani, if I could get your name and address for the report, please.
Alex Avenue, 3 Church Street, Unit 200.
Thank you very much. We're going to need a presentation since we've got people in opposition.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, I see interest and support.
Oh, okay, actually, you're right.
Is this the person behind? You're not speaking?
No, the one is the support.
Okay.
Oh, perfect.
This is, Chair, this is a complicated application, I think maybe, and given Cadbury's input on this, I think it might be worth a presentation.
Yep, sure.
Yeah. Thank you, and there are no chocolates available.
Please go ahead.
Good afternoon, Chair and committee members. My name is Alex Avenue. I am a senior associate and planner at Bows Fields and agent for the application. We did submit a letter outlining how the application meets the four tests of minor variances in the Planning Act. We've also reviewed the staff reports from planning and urban forestry. I understand that they have no objections to the proposal, and we... I understand that they have no objections to the proposal and we agree with the condi- the recommended conditions in those staff reports. We have twelve letters of support, including from our abutting neighbors to the east and the west of the site. You are correct, Mr. Chair, that there was a letter from from Woodbowl. Those are the lawyers for the Mondelies Chocolate Factory to the south. I reached out to the lawyer from Woodbowl and had a conversation and I let them know that we have no issues with their proposed conditions. I then contacted the planner on the file from the city, um, and he also confirmed that he has no issues with those proposed conditions. I believe yesterday there was some communications between Woodbowl and the planner on the file confirming confirming same. As you said, there was another letter noting some concerns with a a portion of the variances from an area resident. Again, there was no address. We tried to reach out to the person if they're, you know, it doesn't look like they're here today, but should they have questions, I'm happy to answer them. So with that being said, I'll focus a bit more this presentation on the process and how we got here, and if you have questions about the variances, happy to answer them. If we can go to the next slide, please. So just quick about the the subject site is on the south side of College, just west of Rush Home Park Crescent. There are three properties, a semi-detached and a detached dwelling. It's located on this portion of College. As you can see, that's angled up to the to the northwest and that does impact some uh some of the variances. And you can see to the south of the site is the parking lot associated with the Mondelies uh factory, which is just further south outside of the page. Uh, next slide, please. Just a bit about the surrounding area. Of course, it's it's located on College and the College, um, uh, five oh six Streetcar Line. Along this portion of College, there are uh, there's a range of built form, including similar-style townhouse developments and mid-rise buildings up to to seven stories. Go to the next slide, please. So the project timeline, so there's a long history on this file. We originally had a pre-application consultation meeting with the city back in twenty twenty-two. Uh, we had several meetings with planning, urban design, and transportation staff, which led to several changes to the proposal, which we have outlined in the letter. So about a year ago, staff were in a position actually to support the application, but we held off on submitting the application until that you see the map on the screen, the E-Hon and major streets bylaw came into effect. So that's the expanding housing options in neighborhoods, and what that did was essentially update official plan policies to help facilitate development exactly like this. And what it did, it recognized that um properties like this site that are located on major streets like College Street ought to um permit uh different built form and a higher den- uh higher density development. And included in that was an increase from four to six stories. So after that official plan was updated, we then made our application for these five-story townhomes, which were then uh compliant with the official plan. After submitting in August, we went door-to-door to our neighbors. As as I said before, we have twelve letters of support from our neighbors, including the abutting neighbors to the east and the west, and those have been uploaded to the AIC. Next slide, please. So this is, I know I only have a minute left, so this is a rendering looking, this is the north elevation, so we're looking south uh along College Street. You can see there are two blocks of townhouses that face each other, and that's a private driveway there in between them. The the top story is a a partial story, so that's our partial fifth story. You can see it's just located on the the outsides of the of the roof of the building, and that provides access to some outdoor amenity area on the roof. The next slide, please. So this is a view just looking from the private driveway out into College to the north, and then the last slide. This is just how the blocks are oriented. College is actually to to the right of the page, so north is to the right. Just in closing, this is providing eleven three-bedroom units in keeping with the intent of the E-Hon bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me just see if we have any questions, sir, at this point, concerns?
Chair, just a quick question. So um you've done an awful lot of work, and I know you got a lot of development planning. You mentioned you've you've chatted with transportation. I mean, I I just know that's that little stretch of College. It's a wonky, it's got a wonky curve to it, right, Gladstone. Sadly, I and many other people have been caught in that a few times. Lot of traffic there, standstill often. So um was tran- transportation was okay with uh in egress and uh along that little strip?
Yeah, they were fine with it. I I guess one one change that we made in direct response to transportation staff now about two years ago was that the ground, the ground floor is inset from the rest of the building. If we go to a few slides, maybe that that one right there, actually, you can look at that, or maybe one down? Yeah, this one, okay. So you see the eight-point-three meters at grade, so that was specifically expanded in order for vehicular turning movements to happen on the site specifically. And that was again something that uh transportation requested. We have a transportation consultant that provided the vehicular movement diagrams, and that was deemed um acceptable. And again, there will be eleven car parking spaces, uh, one for each of the units, and again, transportation staff, after we made those changes, didn't have any any issues with pickup or drop-off or way storage.
Again, I just wanted to make sure. I mean, I'm sure you've done all the studies and everything, but that is a that is a tricky little spot.
Yeah, it is.
Okay. Mr. Lombardi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Just a quick question in terms of the uh the site situation, the context. Is it fair to say that, uh, given the the lots that that the your 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 client has been able to um to uh obtain and 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 the orientation of the proposed development, uh, is it safe to say or fair to say that that orientation based on the lot, uh, I'll say the lot, uh, size, um, triggers some of these variances?
Sorry, is is say that again, is it some of the variances are a result of?
The orientation of the proposal based on the the lot?
Yes, you could, correct.
And I'll say cumulative lot, because there were three.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Mr. Reed?
Just one. Thanks, Chair. And this is more just out of curiosity, but I'm wondering um why you chose the townhouse form instead of, say, a small apartment building or or another form that may you may even be able to get more density from. And additionally, um, the parking, like if if you considered, um, I'm just not even sure, demand-wise, if if the demand is there for one parking space per unit in this downtown neighborhood. Anyway, I understand that's not related to the variance. It's more just a question.
Yeah, well, I'll answer the first question. Way back when we started this in twenty twenty-two, we did look at um something potentially denser, and it was just internally decided that 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 wasn't the direction we would take. In terms of in terms of the parking spaces, I understand what you're saying and everything else that's happening in the city right now is kind of less and less parking, especially in areas like this. But but these are family-sized units. They're two thousand, around twenty-two hundred square feet. Three bedrooms, you know, meant for families, and I think the intent of how this would be marketed is more towards families and the assumption that there would perhaps be one car associated with that, so we wanted to ensure that we're we're providing the those types of amenities for um for families, but I I understand what we are coming from.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
Any other questions? I was just gonna comment, I was looking in the renderings, and there's a rendering of the private driveway. Little kiddies playing and stuff. And I sort of half expected to see laundry lines strung up. The design is actually quite interesting. It's somewhat reminiscent from from my perspective of some of the European cities where, you know, there's an intimacy. And I think maybe for for Toronto, people are, we may not be as comfortable with with that idea, but I think it's a this intimacy also assists in developing community. So I suspect that this project eventually will have a really interesting community as time goes on.
Yeah, and and than- thank you for 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 noting that, because I know the the architects aren't here, but maybe they're listening, but from Super Cool, that was that was our architects, was something that we were really focused on in what we worked with staff throughout the process, and this, I'm calling it a private driveway, but the rendering does show the the potential for what that may be. It's not, this is a private driveway, that's not gonna be, you know, used up all, like, very often by vehicles, and that's an outdoor area for, you know, the residents of this little community to enjoy, so like, that was exactly what we've been thinking over the past few years.
Thank you very much. Since with no other questions, comments, we'll take it into committee. Thank you. Boy, who'd like to lead this?
We have speakers.
We do have a speaker?
Yeah.
Oh, I beg your pardon. I I thought we were, I apologize. All right. I think we have one person or two. One is in support and one in opposition or concerned.
Through the chair, we have a a speaker in interest and a speaker in support, so the speaker at sixty-five Queen Street West, you have been unmuted.
Good afternoon. My name is Mythia Moragasu. I'm with Woodbowl LLP at sixty-five Queen Street West, Suite fourteen hundred.
Hi, good afternoon, and thank you for being here. Uh, you've got five minutes?
Yes, so we are legal counsel for Mondelies Canada, Inc., the owner and operator of the Cadbury Factory located at two seven seven Gladstone Avenue. On behalf of our client, we had previously submitted correspondence to the committee outlining concerns with the proposed application before you. These, those operational concerns related to potential noise, odor, and traffic impacts, as well as the risk of complaints that could affect the factory's ongoing operations and future expansion. As previously mentioned, we have spoken with the agent and resolved our concerns, and we are confirming that Mondelies Canada support for the approval of the variances, subject to the three agreed-upon conditions to protect the Cadbury Factory's ongoing operations and ensure compatibility between the industrial and residential uses. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I I was just looking at the letter that you you submitted. So there are, what's it, three or four conditions attached? I'm not sure.
Yes, there's three. There are three.
The three conditions.
And they're listed in our uh correspondence dated October seventh.
Thank you. I'm not sure. Let me just check with uh Sabrina, is are these conditions one that we can impose? Because it's between, presumably between Cadbury and the developer.
Through you, Mr. Chair, then it stays between?
It stays between them, yeah. Well, we thank you, and 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 from what I believe the agent here has indicated, they're quite happy with the the conditions that you have suggested. So they can't be imposed, that that's a something in the relationship between yourselves and and although I I think the folks that are gonna be living there will be having this wonderful aroma of chocolates. I can't see too many complaints. Mr. Lombardi?
One last question for the
Please.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, and and let me preface my my questions by saying that I don't want you to take this as a pejorative uh type of question, uh, and and I'm not trying to be sarcastic, but given the current state of affairs with housing uh in the GTA, the current economy, uh, does your client believe that the this type of proposal, this development will uh will be successful going forward? I mean, I understand the the type of units, the size of units, which I think are the type that are probably attractive today. But what's the sense in terms of the confidence going forward to be able to to market these and successfully sell these units?
My apologies. Is this directed towards Mondelies?
No, it's to the agent.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry. Please go ahead.
I mean, we are optimistic. I know that the the housing market right now is is, I mean, I I know it from from my work at Bows Fields and working with developers all the time, the way, you know, the the way things are going, but, you know, w- w- we are we're optimistic and we're we're dedicated to to building this. Again, this, you know, the owners here are, you know, folks that have owned these homes for a long time. It's not a typical developer that's developing these. So there's been a lot of of thought put into, you know, making making this work. That's why we worked for the past two years with the city plus on, you know, every single, you know, little setback and little inch means a lot on this one, so that's why, you know, given the amount of work that we did and the feedback that we've had from staff, we're we're optimistic.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or concerns? No? We'll take it into, we'll take it into
I will say
Through you, Mr. Chair, hold on. We do have another speaker, so we have to hear from all our speakers, then it goes back to to the applicant. So let's go to the next speaker, although it's showing us support. We still have to hear.
Matt, you have been unmuted?
Thank you very much. Maybe just to jump back for a second to your previous question about the market viability.
Mr. Kingston, just for the record, your name and address, please.
My apologies. It's Matthew Kingston, and I'm at sixty-two Saint Anne's Road, just southeast of the subject property.
I have to apologize to you for for not noting that you were the next speaker.
No, not at all.
Please go ahead.
I I will cede my time uh for the most part, but just just wanting to respond to the market. It it definitely is the worst market we've seen in over twenty years. But we started this um uh from a perspective of who we thought would live here. Both the owners of this property and myself are uh have young families who attend the schools in the neighborhood, and we really uh thought of ourselves when designing this. So it's something where we we get it, like, right now, it it's a difficult market, but but we believe in the fundamentals of of this neighborhood and why people want to live here. And so we we do view it as as something that will have demand, uh, hopefully in this market, but definitely is a market strength.
Thank you very much. Let me just see if there's any questions for you, or no, none. Okay, thank you so much. All right. We're taking it to committee now. Okay. Yeah, I I
Did you have something else to add about the conditions, maybe? I thought you were trying to say something there.
No, I was I was only gonna say that it was, um, the other speaker was Matt Kingston, who, you know, no other comments. Yeah, correct, correct.
Thank you. Yeah, if I maybe I'll just start off. I think I think, uh, you know, the question of market conditions. Well, market conditions come and go. So in terms of projects, uh, they may be delayed, canceled at times, depending on the nature of the project. I hope this one goes through because I do see its merit, and particularly for where it's located. It's really in the core of the city. Uh, and three-bedroom homes for families, I think, makes a lot of sense. So I'm I'm quite supportive of of this particular application. Mr. Reed?
Yeah, I agree, Chair. I I think that it's, I think it's an an interesting kind of take on a more modern take on the small apartment buildings that surround it, on that stretch of college and and slightly further. And I do think that it makes sense in terms of this unit mix. And I I it's a creative design to get a lot of units on on one relatively small lot and and while internalizing impacts. I I do take the concerns of Cadbury seriously. They've they've been there a very long time. They employ a lot of people. And I'm just wondering if we, looking at their conditions, I think that maybe we can include some of them. I think some of them are maybe appropriate for this committee to to apply. I'm not sure if the third one is. But regarding the windows and the rooftop amenity spaces, I I think those ones, I feel comfortable that those are ones that we could put on as a condition, just to give them some some satisfaction, that their concerns are being taken seriously.
Mr. Lombardi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I concur with with your comments on this project. I think it's a well-designed project. I think it it's appropriately located uh on College Street. It 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 meets the uh the Street. It, it, it meets the intent of OPA 727, major streets. And as a, as a former economic developer, I can tell you that I've dealt with situations such as this, where you have an existing non-residential use, expressing some concerns. But in this case, after much dialogue, it seems that there's support, of course, albeit with some proposed conditions. And I think we can incorporate those conditions in, in any approval. But I, I think this is, this is a well-deserving proposal. I'm prepared to, to, to either move it or second approval with, subject to conditions. But yeah, I'll go forward and support this. I think, I really like the, the proposal itself.
If I'm not mistaken, our agent has indicated that they're quite happy with the conditions that Cadbury presented. So if we put it, put the first two...
I'd like to get your take, Sabrina. I think the first two are clearly ones we could. I'm just, I don't know about the third, if that's in terms of sign-off and who, who monitors that condition.
That's, that's the key. Typically, when conditions are imposed by private properties' owners, then it should remain between them, right? We have conditions from urban forestry and community planning.
That's right. Yeah.
Couldn't the first two conditions be, just, I checked that building permit, right? Like it's, you know, to the satisfaction of the Buildings Department, or I don't know?
Petronal buildings, we do their own checks and balances, right?
Could we bring that, sorry, can we bring that, that letter up on the screen? I just want to review those conditions. I have it in front of me.
Chair, can we just, also while we're doing that, can we go out of committee for a second?
Sorry.
Can I go out of committee for a second?
Yes, by all means.
So I just want to put it to you. So just on the record, you are agreeing to the conditions, the three conditions that Cadbury or Mondelez has, has put forward. Correct. For the record.
Yes.
Okay. So I, I, I think we have a record of their agreement, and whether that's legally binding or not. And they, as, as private parties, then can, you know, satisfy themselves with other legal language around that. So I, I think to allay any kind of concern about, you know, clearing the conditions, I think maybe we'll, my suggestion would be to leave it at that.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I think you're right. Otherwise, we get into a situation of being involved in something that's between two private parties.
Just, just for the record, Mr. Chair, I'm looking at the three conditions. I mean, these are site plan conditions. I'm okay with not including them and going through the, the private enforcement, which is probably the way to go. But these are, I mean, if, if we tied these to the site plan, I think they're just, they could be typical site plan conditions. Anyway.
Okay. One thing I must note that I think it was very prudent of Cadbury, Mondelez to actually come forth with these recommendations. And I think they have genuine concern.
It's not uncommon, right, when you've got potentially conflicting uses, industrial uses and residential, is it good to put in? I think the experience has now been that, you know, residences get built and then the complaints start happening, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, I think, personally, I'm satisfied with the applicant's agreement of those conditions. So what do you think?
I don't feel strongly either way. I think that there's, there's goodwill that's being shown, and I don't, I don't doubt that this, these will get carried through.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Do you want to include some privacy screening? Like that would be the condition number two?
Which we are, not uncommon for us to do, right?
Which is something that we typically do. So like, I mean...
For rooftop patio? But where, where would you put it, like?
Well, they're saying any rooftop amenity spaces patio should be shielded with noise visual screens.
So to the south, between it and the factory on the south side?
Then the question is, do we also have that between residents? So it would be north and south side of every unit?
Yeah.
I'm just making this suggestion, but if you want to just leave it as what community planning has suggested, as well as urban forestry, then...
Mr. Chair, I, I think perhaps we're, you know, creating a little more, not confusion, but certainly more possibility for, for something in the future happening. I, I'm okay with leaving it with a private agreement, because as my colleagues have said, I think there's, there's been discussion and cooperation. And I'm not, I don't believe that there'll be any problems going forward. I think there's been discussion, which is better to happen before than after something is built. And so I'm confident that these will be addressed privately.
I thank you, Mr. Lombardi. I think I agree with you that the developers would, would not do anything to jeopardize the potential sale of the residence. So...
I mean, we can ask the lawyer who's representing Cadbury.
I, I, I'm quite happy with just leaving it as is. Yeah, I'm sure.
Just move a motion.
Yep. So let's take it into committee for a motion. Who would like to step forward? Mr. Lombardi, thank you.
And that is with the urban forestry condition. And was there another condition or another?
I believe it was planning condition. So it's forestry three and planning conditions. Do we have a second, though?
I have a second.
Mr. Reed, thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. You have your approval. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to, moving on to item number 16, 392 Summer Hill Avenue. Purpose of the application is to alter the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling, sorry, building by constructing a two-story side...
What happened to 15?
I'm sorry.
23 Maryland.
Oh, did I miss? No. Ah, sorry. Skip the page. Thank you. Sorry. I take that back. I will put it in reverse and go to item number 15, 23 Maryland Crescent. Purpose of the application is to alter the existing one-story detached dwelling by constructing a front-covered porch with stairs, a rear one-story addition with deck and stairs, and a complete second-story addition. Committee had before it copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, five photographs of trees on the subject property, covering letter from the agent, and staff report from urban forestry.
Through the chair, we have the, through the chair, we have the agent online, and there are no speakers for this item?
Thank you. Ross DeFina, are you there?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair.
Name and address, please, sir.
My name is Ross DeFina. My address is 9 Wolf Court in City of Bonn. I'm the agent acting on behalf of the owners of 23 Maryland Crescent.
Thank you. We don't have anybody in opposition, so let me just see if my colleagues would like a presentation, or if they have any questions for you.
Sure.
None? Okay. Yeah, I, maybe I'll just throw out one question. On your deck...
Certainly.
The rear deck, I was just wondering, I'm not sure, perhaps you may be able to shed some light. On the south side, would there be, would a privacy screen be appropriate for that side? Not quite sure.
A privacy screen is not necessarily needed on that side. However, the, the owner did consider putting a privacy screen. At this point, he hasn't decided to do so.
Oh, okay. That's wonderful. Yeah, I wasn't sure if there was sufficient overlook to merit one.
Fair.
But if the owner's already comfortable with putting one up for both sides, actually, it helps both sides. So that's great. Okay. Thank you. I don't think we'll add that as a condition, since the owner's already interested in doing that. Okay. Thank you. I think we'll take it into committee. I think it's a very straightforward application. Ms. Reed?
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, this, this looks like one of the few original houses left on this street. There's been a lot of transition that's happened already, and this is catching up to that. And what's being proposed, I think, is, is fully reasonable. It's staying almost within the existing footprint. And it's, it's really just matching what's there. And the variances to get to that, I believe are minor. I think the impact of them are minor over what's permitted as a right. So I'll move approval of this application, subject to urban forestry condition one.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Second, Mr. Clay. Thank you. Mr. Clay, seconds. All those in favor? Thank you. You have your approval. So thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you. You too. Okay. Now, moving on to item number 16, which is 392 Summer Hill Avenue. Purpose of the application is to alter the existing two-story semi-detached building by constructing a two-story side west addition and a side west porch and stairs. Also to construct interior alterations for a new medical office use, dental office. No parking spaces will be provided on the site. Committee had before the following communication: copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, two photographs of the subject property, and, sorry, an encroachment permit number, and we have staff report from transportation and development review.
Through the chair, we have the agent online, and there are no registered speakers.
Okay. Ms. Azimi, are you there?
Yes. Hello.
Hi. Can you, volume is a little low. I'm not sure if you're too far away from your mic.
Okay. I will get a closer look.
Once you're ready, name and address, please.
Do you hear me properly?
Wonderfully. Thank you.
Perfect. This is Maryam Azimi of Permit First. My address is 253 Davis Drive, Oxbridge, Ontario, L9PA1R1. And...
Thank you. Actually, you don't have anybody in opposition, so we don't need a presentation from that perspective. It's a fairly straightforward application with two variances, which both look fairly minor. But let me see if my colleagues have any questions for you, or need a presentation of any sort?
Absolutely.
Okay. We'll take it into committee, Ms. Azimi, and then render decision.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. This is a fairly straightforward application, from what I can see. Anybody want to take this?
Yeah, sure. Sorry, Peter. Sure. Again, I agree. This is very straightforward. It's just a minor, little addition off to the side and a bit of a conversion of use. So it's quite an appropriate application for this neighborhood. I'll move approval, subject to transportation conditions.
Thank you. Second, Mr. Reed. Thank you. Okay. All those in favor? Thank you. Ms. Azimi, have your approval. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Thank you. And moving on to item number 17, which was, I believe, deferred? No, not deferred, did we? We did defer it. Yeah, that was Roxbury. Okay, that's terrific. So we're done with that. And now 18 moved to the afternoon, and we've got 20, I believe, this morning. Is that correct?
Yes. Through you, Mr. Chair. This is our last item for the morning session.
Care with me a second. I just got to find item number 20. Okay, moving on to item 20, which is the last item for this morning. It's 46 High View Crescent. Purpose of the application is to alter the existing two and one-half story detached dwelling by constructing a complete third-story addition with a rear balcony, a new front ground level vestibule entrance, and a new rear ground floor entrance with stairs abutting the north portion of the dwelling. Committee had before the following communication: copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, 12 photographs of the subject property, use of zoning applicable law certificate, declaration form, and support, correspondence in support from High View Crescent. And we have one correspondence in concern from a resident on High View Crescent as well. We also have correspondence in opposition from High View Crescent. All on High View Crescent. Thank you. That's, that's a lot.
Through the chair, we have the agent online, and there is one speaker in opposition.
Okay. Thank you. Fernando Lima, are you there?
I'm here.
You'll get your name. Good afternoon. Could I get your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Fernando Lima. I'm the architect and representing my client. My address is 5100 South Service Road, Burlington, Ontario, Unit 59.
Okay, thank you. It looks like we do need a presentation, because we do have at least one person in opposition that may be speaking, or maybe more than one.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah. So this application to facilitate a modernized, existing single-family dwelling, 46 High View Crescent, the proposal includes a new front vestibule, a third story, which is existing, but we are basically squaring off with the roof. We're not increasing footprint. We're not altering the, so we build it within the existing footprint. And we're also changing, not changing setbacks on the other sides. The variances, variance number one is, you know, to square off the roof, so making it more modern. So the two pair of walls is a little bit higher than if it was a sloped roof. So that's the, is, is, as a result of the, of the, you know, adjustment to the roof. The other variance is for, we are, because it's a growing family, you know, our clients, so we add a small vestibule to the front. And because of that, the setback was slightly decreased. We believe the, these variances are minors amid the four tests of the Planning Act. The, the proposal is desirable for the appropriate development of the land. The variance facilitate, facilitate a logical and desirable improvement to the property. That constitutes good planning. The project facilitates the modernization of an existing home to meet the needs of a growing family representing a significant desirable reinvestment in the city's housing stock. But in a very building, of the existing structure, the proposal is a more sustainable and less disruptive approach than a full demolition and rebuild. Number three, the general intent and the purpose of the zoning bylaws maintained. The proposal respects the underlying, underlying principles of the zoning regulations, which are intended to manage the scale, impact of development. The intent of height and FSI, the purpose of these regulations to control building mass, this is achievable by maintaining the side setbacks, preserving the building's footprint, reducing the overall height. Because we're actually reducing the height from the existing pitched roof, so our flat roof will be kept lower to the existing, existing height. We're also not proposing new windows on those two side walls to be sympathetic to the neighbors. We do, as was mentioned to you, have letters of support from both the neighbor across the street and then, and then, and then behind. The two neighbors on both sides, they seem to have a separate dispute with the owner for about garbage or things of that nature, which is not the purview, purview of this application. In conclusion, this application presents a thoughtful renovation to modernize a family home with, while respecting its neighbors and character of the community, emits all four tests, and we respectfully request the community's approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions? Should we hold them off? Okay. We'll hold off any questions till afterwards. We have folks that... till afterwards. We have folks that want to speak to this particular application.
Yeah, so...
Hi, my name is Eric Rubin. I live at 44 High View Crescent. Can you hear me?
Sorry.
Sorry.
Through the chair.
Through the chair.
Yes, Eric.
Yes, Eric.
And I understand that there's another speaker, right, at the same household?
Please note, the same household, hold over five minutes to speak.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Can you just, you're using multiple devices. Can you turn off one of your devices, please?
I'm not on multiple devices. I'm sorry.
We were getting feedback.
Are you able to hear me clearly now?
We can hear you, but I can hear myself voice.
That's bizarre. How about this? Any better?
Well, yes, I think we're good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and pardon me for that.
Sorry, could we just go back to the beginning? Your name and address, please?
My name is Eric Rubin. I live at...
Sorry, we can still, we can still get feedback. We're still getting feedback.
There's only one device on my end. I'm very sorry.
Can you just hold on a second?
Sure.
Testing, testing?
Are you able to hear?
I can hear you, but I'm still getting feedback.
Nope. On another floor. Oh, let me try my headphones. Pardon me. Maybe that will help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that any better?
Let's see if I'm getting feedback. No, I think, I think we're good. Thank you. So let's begin, begin, begin at the beginning. Name, your name and address, please.
Thank you very much. My name is Eric Rubin. I live at 44 High View Crescent.
Thank you. You have five minutes to make your case, Mr. Rubin. Thank you.
Sorry, are you able to hear?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. My name is Eric Rubin. I live at 44 High View Crescent. I'm the neighbor to the south of the applicant. We share a driveway. High View Crescent, where we live, is a very consistent street. The east and west sides of the street are entirely composed of two-story houses with a gabled roof, all of the same typology and form and the same setbacks. While there are renovations to many houses, all renovations have maintained the original massing form in front. It is for this reason that I reached out to my neighbors, the applicants, so to speak to me before this meeting, so I could better understand their intentions for the renovations. I'd gotten the plans, like all the other neighbors, and I wanted to talk to them. However, they declined to meet or speak, and that's why I'm speaking here today. Before I get into my very, my very basic three points, and I don't think I'm even going to use the five minutes, I want to say that the complaint of garbage is completely to do with the demolition, nothing to do with the plants. Don't understand what the architect was mentioning. Okay, so I have three points. First, the proposed rear porch on the third floor is an anomaly to the neighborhood. I don't think there's another house that has a legal third-story porch. Because of the shared drives on this side, and the backyards are relatively open and exposed to one another, so porch that overlooks our rear yard from three stories is a privacy and sound concern. So I would request respectfully that any such porch has a standard 1.8 meter privacy screens for the full depth of the terrace. The front yard setback is the second point. It changes the character of the street, although I must say, this is a pretty minor concern when measured against the other two. And then finally, the last is the third-story addition. This is a complete anomaly to the street. It changes the house type and the roof type, and it would lead to the creation of a three-story, largely blank walls along the shared drive. I want to be clear that I recognize the need for density in Toronto. I recognize the housing shortage, and were this a third-floor addition in the service of providing extra housing, I might have a different view. But it is described in the drawings as a large walk-in closet and a principal bathroom. These two things could easily be accommodated without modifying the front of the roof. So in other words, I don't see the need to break the character of the street for this. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me just see if my colleagues have any questions for you at this point. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next speaker.
Yeah, through the chair, we, we got confirmation from the speakers at 48 and 50 High View Crescent that they will not be speaking to this item at this time.
Thank you.
So that is all for the speakers.
That's a lot. Okay, great. Thank you. Mr. Lima? Mr. Lima?
Oh, sorry, I was muted. Sorry.
Okay, no, no problem. I think you heard the comments from the neighbor at 44. Would you care to comment on those, please?
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate those concerns, and we will be happy to address. So the first concern was with the porch. We'll be happy to install the privacy fence in there. In regards to the third-story addition, this is actually not an addition to a third-story addition. This is already a three-story building. We're basically squaring off the walls, because with the roof being pitched, we lose the new wall area, if you will, between the third floor and the pitch of the roof. So we're actually not adding a third story. We are just squaring off an existing third story, and the resulting roof will be actually lower than the existing pitched roof, if you make sense. So we are now increasing the massing, if you will, to that extent. We're basically working with the existing footprint that we have. So I hope that that kind of clarifies and alleviates the concern. Yes, and in terms of the design, we opt to a more clean, more than design in line with what's happening throughout the city. It's not, nothing outrageous. It's super simple, nothing to overpower the neighborhood. So that'll be my comments. I'll be happy to address any...
Thank you. Thank you very much. I think the privacy screen piece was, if I'm not mistaken, it's related to your third-floor rear deck?
Right.
You mentioned porch. It's not the porch, but not the front porch, it's the rear deck, I think, that has overlook on the north and south side.
That's what I meant to apologize.
So would you be okay with that being a condition, that there be privacy screening on the north and south sides of that deck?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Let me just see if my colleagues have any questions for you, any comments. If not, Mr. Lombardi's got a question for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very quickly, through you, the site plan drawings, the elevations have a note on them, on two of them, which says not used. There's a portion, a rectangular box at the bottom. I'm just curious, like on A-5.1, I think it's a rhetorical question, but what is the point of having that on the drawings?
Sure, absolutely. So, because these drawings, once they develop to building permit stage, we use that space as for general notes, for construction notes, and all the things. So just reserve that space on the page for future use.
Okay, thank you. And quickly, you have a number of, you provided a number of photos that show trees that you're indicating. And I don't need you to go through all of them, but what's the point of those, those photos?
I'm sorry, you have it shown on the screen?
Sure. They follow the last drawing?
Oh, no, this was something that was asked us to provide. I'm not quite sure. It's not my intention for anything. I don't know, to be honest. I think the city asked for those pictures.
Yeah, but who, who provided the pictures?
Oh, it was the owner that provided those pictures.
And if the city asked for them, what was the point?
Honestly, I'm not entirely sure. It's not, I'm sure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardi. Okay, we'll take it into committee and look for a decision. These are three variances before us, very, from my perspective, very minor in the intent. One of the challenges that I've noted from a number of the folks in opposition is the notion that it changes the character of designs on the streets. But I think that's one of the things that change brings. My thought would be that at one point, only a single level house would have been appropriate. When you introduce a second level, that's a big change. So I don't see that being a problem at all. And with, the only condition I would add is the privacy screening on the rear third-floor balcony on the north and south sides, so that the neighbors to the north and south have privacy as well. I don't see any other issues with this one. Miss Lombardi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question. I put in my notes that the site plan drawings that we have are revised plans. Is that correct?
I don't have anything that says revised. This is item number 20.
The reason I ask is if we are going to approve it, that would be one of the conditions I would add, construction substantial in accordance with the revised plans. But I just wanted to confirm that there are revised plans. We can ask the architect, I assume.
I don't see a submission of a revised site plan for 46 High View.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Would that condition be for site plan and elevation plans?
Yes.
Okay, and then it's the plans dated or received on August 29th? We can come out of committee and ask if, because I don't see any revised plans. I just see the set of plans that were submitted and received on August 29th, 2025.
Through you, Mr. Chair. That may be a notation I wrote down based on comments from the residents in opposition. So if we can confirm that they, the plans have not been revised, then I'm okay with that.
Okay, thank you. So we'll come out of committee and go back to Mr. Lima. Mr. Lima?
Yes.
Are there any revised site plans that you've presented, or any other plans that are revised that have been submitted?
I think you have the most current there on the screen. I'm not quite sure. I think you can put a condition, if you like, that this is the site plan.
Have you submitted any revised drawings, though?
Um, no, not really, no, we submitted. I can double-check here my notes.
Yeah, I mean, the only people that would, should know whether you've revised any of the plans would be, I suppose, yourself and the architect. I don't see any, but...
Yeah, I don't think so.
No, no, I don't think so. Nope, okay. That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Lima.
Thank you.
Shall we take it into committee and look for a decision? Yep. Mr. Reed?
I'm happy to move this. I understand the neighbor has some concerns about the impacts of the variances, but I think that the impacts are negligible compared to what's allowed as of right. This is just a small addition to the third floor, and then the additional smaller elements to this. So I think that these are minor, and I think that they do meet the four tests. So I, I move approval of the application subject to the screening that we talked about on the north and south side of the third-floor deck in the back. And I'd also like to tie it to the site plan, just to ensure that the, the front enclosed area is limited to what is shown on the site plan.
Terrific, thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Lombardi. All those in favor? Thank you. You have your approval, Mr. Lima. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. The committee will resume at 2:15 PM.